Good evening. At this time, I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting of March 29th, 2021. For viewers watching at home, all commissioners and the public are participating via video conference or teleconference to assist the city in our social distancing efforts. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Commissioner Lanson?
Present.
Commissioner Link?
Present.
Commissioner McMahon?
Present.
Commissioner Newman?
Present.
Chair Bass?
Present.
Ms. Finley, are there any written comments, announcements, or continuances at this time?
Thank you. Good evening. Yes, there were two correspondence items that were received and provided to the Planning Commission earlier this afternoon, and there are no additional announcements or continuance regarding this evening's agenda items.
You got it. Thank you very much. Now is the time for public comment. At this time, any person may address the Commission regarding a city planning matter that is not on this evening's agenda. Should the Commission wish to discuss an issue raised by a member of the public, the issue will be referred to staff for scheduling out a future agenda. Anyone who would like to speak under the public comments must complete a speaker card and file it with the Recording Secretary before the public comments portion of the agenda is called. Speakers' remarks should be addressed to the Commission as a whole and not to an individual commissioner or staff member. Unless otherwise provided by the Commission, speakers are limited to five minutes. The monitor in front of you will show you the remaining time you have. I believe we do not have any speakers this evening for the public speaking comment.
No.
No.
Speaking section.
No.
Alright, so then we will move on to the consent calendar. Next, we have the consent calendar with the minutes of March 15th, 2021. Do any of my fellow commissioners have any comments or a motion to approve the minutes?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move that we approve the consent calendar with the minutes of our March 15th, 2021 meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Newman. Will the Secretary please prepare us for a vote?
Commissioner Lanson?
Yes.
Commissioner Link?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Aye.
Chair Bass?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Next would be Planning Commission public hearings, however, we have none this evening, so we're going to move directly to department reports. 8A, the first department report is item 8A, the 2020 General Plan and Housing Element Annual Progress Report and Housing Successor Agency Annual Report, GPAR, 2021-70097. The report will be presented by Senior Planner Ian Holt. Mr. Holt, you may begin your report. Mr. Holt, you'll want to go ahead and unmute yourself. Thank you, sir.
Oh, someone seemed to be doing it. Alright, you can hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Alright. Alright, good evening, Chair, Planning Commissioners. Before you tonight, we have the 2020 General Plan and Housing Element Annual Progress Report. So, as a bit of background, each year, cities are required to provide this annual report to the State Office of Planning and Research in Housing and Community Development. They're required to be held in a public setting and presented to the lead decision-making body prior to submitting to the state, which has the due date of April 1st. The components of the report include a general plan annual progress report, the housing element progress report, as well as the Housing Successor Agency Annual Report. This year, staff's presenting this information to the Planning Commission to provide some added context regarding the general plan and housing element updates. So, the main components of this presentation consist of the status of the current general plan in terms of any amendments and the implementation measures that have taken place. Also, provide perspective on the housing production that's occurred during this current housing cycle, the fifth cycle from 2014 to 2021. And then also just provide a glimpse perspective into our future housing needs as we get into the general plan update and the housing element for those housing needs identified under the sixth cycle of the housing element. So, in 2020, there's actually been no amendments to the general plan in terms of any of the various chapters related to the topic areas and also any land use designation changes. I'm sure you're aware that there's been a variety of prescreens for potential general plan amendments, but actually for the year 2020, none have occurred. Also, overall, the general plan remains in compliance for the year 2020 and in terms of the guidelines, and these, excuse me for a second. There we go. And these updates reflect a variety of issues not addressed in the previous version of the general plan guide. Oh, wait, the general plan remains in compliance for 2020 as we basically maintained our housing element certification over the years. So, in perspective, in 2017, the Office of Planning Research released a comprehensive update to the general plan guidelines. These updates reflect a variety of issues not addressed in the previous version of the general plan guidelines and also reflect a variety of recent legislation that basically uses the mandatory update of the housing element as a means to require jurisdictions to address the growing issues such as safety and other new requirements to and the new requirement to address environmental justice. So, overall, what we have to report is the implementation parts of the general plan. And for the most part, the implementation occurs at the project level through discretionary review and environmental review during the process. And that's when we're applying our various planning policies, safety measures insofar as the safety element goes, as well as any kind of tree preservation. So, those kind of policies are actually implemented at the project level. However, under the circulation element, you're going to have a variety of other non-private project-related implementation measures, such as the capital improvement programs that include a variety of pedestrian and safety improvements, as well as some programs for providing updates to the local road safety plan. Also, I should mention for the year 2020, Community Development Department, as well as Public Works, worked in concert to adopt an administrative vehicle miles traveled policy. This was a requirement at SB 743, and as of July 1st, 2020, cities were to adopt a method and approach to applying traffic analysis under the VMT requirement of CEQA. In terms of open space, basically to report, there's a variety of COSCA activities, including land acquisitions, training programs, trail access, and a variety of other improvement projects. So, over the duration of the current housing element cycle, the city has permitted 697 units. And that averages about 99 and a half units a year over the past seven years of reporting for this housing element. So, in meeting this, the RENA progress, we have a breakdown of the various housing types and income levels that was produced during that year. We had 144 apartment units, 30 accessory dwelling units, 23 townhome units, and 23 single-family dwellings, which include 13 fire disaster rebuilds. In terms of the income category breakdown, as you can see by the chart there, we have 11 in the very low-income category and 131 in the moderate income. These are all attributed to one project, which is the 299 Thousand Oaks Boulevard Project that was issued this year. The rest of the above moderate are basically accounted for in the townhouse units and single-family and ADUs. So, to put a little bit into perspective, you know, here we have the state income limits for 2020, and you know, these are reset every year by HCD, and it's part of determination that they give, and it relates to how they fund qualifying housing programs and projects. So, you know, in the chart here, there's quite a bit to absorb. The typical proxy that's used in determining affordability is the four-person household maximum annual income, but also we included the two-person maximum annual income as well. And you can see that the median income, you know, basically lands right in the middle of that moderate income category. Just to put it in perspective, you know, the median income for Thousand Oaks is actually slightly higher, as you probably all know, for Ventura County, and it hovers around $103,000 a year. But to put into perspective, you know, people who can afford, well, the salaries of, you know, the typical workforce can be quite a bit under any of these median incomes. A licensed nurse can be around $52,000 a year. An elementary school teacher, $67,000 a year. A paralegal, $75,000 a year, and firefighters at approximately $90,000 a year. And a civil engineer is around $98,000 a year. Also, the, you know, the income to rent an apartment, which the going rate for a two-bedroom could be around $2,200 a month, basically requires an income of about $105,600. Whereas if you were going to purchase a home, you would need a home at a price of about $732,000. You would need an income of about $144,000 to basically make that loan. So, this table basically summarized the number of units permitted to date for the fifth housing element cycle. One thing to note, that even though we've exceeded the overall number of 255, which was our RENA number, and we've produced 697 during this timeframe, the permits issued fall predominantly in the moderate and above moderate income categories. So, that's leaving quite a deficit in terms of the very low and low-income categories. And as you can see, you know, even though we produced far more than the total number, we've only met 48% of our RENA for this current housing cycle. And middle column just basically summarized those income categories there. And here, you just have a quick visualization of, yeah, basically, the yellow bars represent the RENA allocation and the orange represent permits issued. So, just to provide some additional perspective, in planning for this current cycle, the fifth cycle of RENA, our 2014 housing sites inventory identified sites that totaled about 1,638 units. So, this plan or the site inventory provide a significant buffer over those, the number of units required for that year. And we have a, you know, various breakdowns. Typically, those are broken down into vacant sites, of which there was a 704 units, underutilized sites hovering around 575 units. And then we also had a pending affordable housing partner project with many mansions on Hillcrest. However, that project did not come to fruition, and the general plan amendment for that project was not approved. So, those units were not achieved. I'd just also like to note that, you know, when you're providing your sites inventory, you get to count the homes that are produced in that year. So, the map does not include 279 units that were approved in the year 2013 when the housing element was being prepared. So, also, I want to just kind of point out and use the map as a visual cue. We have, you know, the existing general plan map here, and it may be hard to see, but you have kind of grayed out our the actual sites inventory. And I wanted to kind of impress upon the Planning Commission and also just provide, you know, some perspective. In terms of when planning for RENA and identifying sites, it's important to also, well, it's important to note that the RENA site inventory, it's not based on the capacity of the land area for any of the land use designations that allow residential. So, the housing sites are selected due to their potential feasibility that they could be developed within the next eight years. So, you know, when planning for RENA and then identifying the sites, you know, we also have to kind of consider what's the typical percentage of affordable units within a private development as market rate units typically subsidize the production of affordable housing. And in Thousand Oaks, that percentage of affordable housing within projects over the recent years hovers around 10% or less. So, this is kind of a segue into our upcoming cycle. And our RENA now has, is 10 times the amount of what it was the last time. So, we have 2,621 units that need to be identified in a site inventory with an adequate buffer. And given the higher percentile of very low and low income, you kind of have to anticipate a buffer that would help capture that, especially since there are less opportunities for the city to partner with nonprofit affordable housing developers or agencies to actually build 100% affordable projects. Excuse me. So, in looking at the housing sites inventory, there's also a variety of new proxies that we have to consider in terms of planning for those sites. Due to our population size, any sites identified to capture very low and low-income categories must allow at least a maximum density of 30 dwelling units to the acre. And then when we're looking at the site feasibility, you have to look at, within that land use capacity, what sites are actually feasible? And we have to look at factors such as, you know, what's vacant and underutilized. Underutilized sites could be anything such as landed value to improvement value or the amount of development that's occurred on property. But other factors such as vacancy, availability of infrastructure, ownership, and lease agreements are some new criteria that HCD will be looking at as we start developing these sites. I mean, identifying these sites. The city does not develop these sites. So, you know, this again is important to realize that in planning for the 2,621 units, there needs to be a buffer to allow flexibility in planning for those units. And, you know, as I stated before, we have less opportunities to work with nonprofits to build purely affordable housing projects. And the typical project, you know, does not generate much more than 10% in very low and low-income categories, typically when it's related to a density bonus. So, and another reason, you know, the buffer's important is because as each, as a development of each site is unique, projects may not always satisfy the RENA. And in such a case, you know, the know that loss legislation requires a jurisdiction to identify sites that accommodate the shortfall in the number of units. So, if a project comes in and it was identified for 50 units and it was only to build 40, then you would have to point to another site not already identified that could accommodate those 10 units. And if you're unable to do that, then you would have to initiate a rezoning program, and your housing element would have to do that. And there's a specified timeframe of which you would have to follow through with that rezoning to enable that new housing site to be counted towards your RENA. So, as demonstrated by our fifth housing cycle, which identified almost six times the amount of total units, the buffer allows flexibility in a jurisdiction's ability to demonstrate progress in meeting RENA without a rezoning program and HCD involvement or intervention. So, you know, in the event that we do not get certification with the housing element or we are actually found not to comply with the Housing Affordability Act, there are a variety of penalties and legal challenges that the city may face in the event that it's found. And I should mention that the Housing Accountability Act would be enforced through the court system. And in the event that we were, did not have, acted in good faith in accommodating a project under the Housing Affordability Act, we could lose the ability to qualify for a variety of state and federal funding. That would include, you know, community development block grants, some of the home funds, as well as a variety of other infill and other infrastructure program, funding programs that Public Works uses for road upkeep, sewer, and other infrastructure needs, also as well as any kind of housing and assistant planning programs. And in the event that we're also found in violation, we could lose local control, and that would basically you know, render us defenseless in the case of a court court case, because the basis for our defense is basically having housing element certification. And in the event that we are found to be in violation, we would also could lose the ability to issue building permits and actually lose our zoning authority. And additionally, if you're also found, you know, fines for violations of the Housing Accountability Act and failure to comply with a court order, there can be fines of up to 10, or from 10, starting at $10,000 up to $100,000 per month for housing element programs. Or on a project, on a project basis, a minimum of $10,000 per unit for individual projects or more. And there is a variety of factors that are considered in terms of modifying the fines up and beyond $10,000 a unit, but I won't go into that at this moment. And then finally, if we are in violation, we also have to, or we don't achieve certification, we would have to also carry over the unmet housing needs from the previous cycle. So, moving on to the Housing Successor Agency Report, this is a required report. You know, in 2012, there was the dissolution of the redevelopment agencies. And as such, every year, as part of our annual housing progress report, we have to report on our expenditures and values and inventory of housing units, affordable housing units that we assist with. So, over the year, we've spent about $148,000 in administrative expenditures. Our value assets are over $36 million. And we assisted eight units, affordable housing units. However, I would like to note that we did have three that were lost this year due to covenant expiration. So, with that, would conclude my presentation for the 2020 General Plan Housing Element Annual Progress Report, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much for that presentation, Mr. Holt. Do any of my fellow commissioners have any questions for staff at this point?
I do, Chair Bass.
I appreciate you speaking up, Commissioner Lanson, and you have the floor.
Mr. Holt, thank you for your presentation. A lot of information there to go through. And I just have a few kind of initial questions. I know we have a lot of people to get to, but a few initial questions. When you refer to building permits, I want to make sure everybody understands, is that just the right to build something, or is that an occupancy permit, meaning that an actual unit was built?
It is. For the purposes, the primary purpose of reporting RENA is permits issued. So, that is a building permit issued. There are other components that I didn't go over in my presentation that talk about occupancies, as well as applications received and so forth. But the main point as far as the reporting is building permits issued.
So, when you said we had 697 for, I think it was 697 from 2014 to 2021, those are just building permits? We don't know how many actual units were built in relation to those permits?
We do. I don't have that number off the top of my head, but I would say not all of the 697 permits have been built, because obviously, the ones for this year, predominantly, the 299 project has not been completed. So, it's just shy of that number, but I would have to kind of go back and check. But for the most part, it is assumed that they have been constructed.
Okay. And one thing, and again, I think you said it briefly, but I want to make sure that I understand that. So, when we're issuing permits, the city has not built any of these units and doesn't build units, correct?
Correct. Yeah.
So, these are all pursuant to applications by whoever, landowners, developers, whatever, as to those properties?
Correct.
You mentioned the RENA numbers, and we may want a more explanation for those at home to understand what that means. But one question I had is, for the, again, I'm kind of looking back at the period 2014 on. You indicated that we didn't meet our low and very low categories. Are the numbers for those two areas being carried over, or are they wiped out by virtue of going to the next seven years?
They, they only carry over in the event that you're unable, you're, you do not achieve certification in time for the sixth cycle. So, yeah, that's my understanding.
And this process is going towards certification, so if that's certified, we wouldn't have to pick up those units for the past seven-year period?
Correct.
And again, based on one slide, you indicated that's obviously something to consider going forward for the next seven years. But again, I was just looking backwards to see whether or not those units were going to carry over. And they're not, at least if we get certification?
Correct.
Okay. You indicated on one of the slides, potential downsides, the local control issue, and I kind of wanted to further understand that. How is it we can lose local control by not going along with this process? What exactly would the state process do then to take that away?
Well, you know, part of it would have to be that we've been found not in compliance with, you know, the Housing Accountability Act. So, in the event that we were not able to, one, certify the housing element, excuse me.
You have an assistant there at home, apparently?
Yeah, a four-legged one now. Any case. But the, so in the event that we acted in contrary to the Housing Accountability Act, in which maybe we rendered a decision that we reduced the density on a project, and someone basically took us to a court of law. That is where most of those repercussions would take place. Now, in the event that we're unable, there's some things that we would have to, like if we were unable to achieve certification of our housing element and identify adequate sites, then we would have to come up with this, a site program, a rezoning program that That. Would I have to identify those sites to be rezoned within a certain timeframe?
Okay, and what you kind of went through, my understanding, and again, I think the housing accountability is SB three thirty, I, I, I believe. Based on what an action was, so one of the, the process in there is it's, it looks like we have to have objective standards. Is this part of trying to create and identify these objective standards so these rules will hold up?
I'm sorry, could you just repeat, you were asking about the objective standards?
I'm just trying to understand, again, the ramifications and again, in reading SB three thirty, I think one of the issues is we have to have objective standards. In order to hold things up, we can't have a subjective, I don't like this because it doesn't look good type process anymore. And that's kind of one of the ways of maintaining local control, but I'm trying to make sure if that's, if I have that correctly.
Sir Lanson, you do have that correct, so let me just say, cut to the chase, I think there are examples where you might have a lawsuit, right? And in the lawsuit. The court determines that the city. And this could be any city, any jurisdictional agency. Did not comply with various things like SB three thirty. And then by doing so, the court then orders that developer, for example, that plaintiff gets to now. Produce and develop the property. To their development plans and the city, based on its action, cannot. Prohibit that from happening. Another concept in the SB three thirty is the five hearings, if you will, you can only have five hearings on a project, for example. So these are, again, you're pulling up examples of how SB three thirty. From twenty nineteen has, has. Added new requirements and new penalties. Including the ones you just said, where you might lose the control that you once had. Because you don't follow certain requirements that they've now put into play.
So a- along that line of the lawsuit, is it possible then a judge could decide ultimately what a developer gets to do as opposed to the city?
Absolutely, I think, I mean, in a, in a end case scenario, that would be exactly correct. It would be something in which the court says developer wins, developer's plan are to build, for example, forty units on this property. And the city now is prohibited from stopping that project because of whatever the findings are going to be for that decision. Again, these are hypotheticals, I want to make sure we're clear, but there.
No, and it just, it's, and again, what, what criteria would a judge use and how, you know, and again, so that's just creates a whole nother.
Absolutely, right.
My, my last question, I'll say to Mr. Holder or Mr. Mr. Heer, if you know, is what does this do, process do to our pre-screening process that we have in the city? Does it change it?
Well, yes, I mean, well. The, the pre-screen process is really tied to measure E. And, I mean, this is kind of more segue into the general plan update, but I mean.
I can, I can wait, I can wait for that question until then.
But that's fine, I, I can just kind of, as a precursor. You know, through the general plan update, we're going to be identifying areas where residential uses would be allowed, right? And so therefore, the pre-screen process is generally a tool to evaluate whether changing a land use designation is. You know, right for the purposes of residential development. So as part of the general plan update, we're going to be basically changing designations of which. A majority or. Majority of the residential projects would not need to go through a pre-screen process any longer. Because the land use designation has already been identified for residential development.
I see how that ties in, so I'm sorry I asked that a little early.
Okay, and just what this does, really quick, Mr. Lanson, is that when you have. Property that's not zoned for residential, right? You have a process to go through a general plan amendment, I mean, every city has that process. Ours are unique, or our process is unique because we do have this measure E bank of units. And we can use those units to ensure that we are not going and violating the requirements of measure E. In the case of the general plan, some of those locations in the future might be considered residential. Therefore, they don't have to go through that general plan amendment, so that would in sense, in a sense, impact. Any pre-screening requirement for that location.
Okay, makes sense, I have nothing further at the moment, Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lanson, do any of the commissioners like to ask any questions? Commissioner McMahon?
Yes, I, I just have a quick question, do you know of any cities? In, of ours general size that have had that happen where they've had. Fines and, and all the ramifications of not following up. With Rena numbers?
I am not aware of any personally, no. I do know, all right, go ahead.
No, I was gonna say, I, I know I heard of one for sure, I just can't think of it at this top of my head, and I apologize for that.
So there is basically intent behind this and the, and the state seems to be interested in following through.
Right, and I will tell you that in the last year or two years of legislative action, including proposed legislative. Proposed legislation for this year, upcoming year, again, this is proposed. There are new efforts regarding this requirement and, and penalties and requirements that every city. Who is in violation of the housing element or not having a certified housing element or violation of. Their general plan, for example, they can get reported to the Attorney General, there's already actually a process for that, but. There's a new proposed bill to actually emphasize that, and again, it's just more of a, an example of how. The housing issue for the state legislature has not died, it's actually continuing on and we can get into that later on with the general plan if you want. But there are some, again, proposed. Legislation that again, it, it, it reemphasizes the fact that they really are focused on housing.
Thank you.
Just to add to your question, I mean, I do know, they didn't necessarily have fines, but I know like City of Oxnard. They had a conditional certification for their housing element years back. And they basically had to adopt the rezoning program and implement that within a year. So, you know, they went in with the intent of getting it certified, but they couldn't, they didn't meet HCD's needs. And this was. Just around the time that a lot of these new housing legislation was taking place as well. But then, of course, the, I would say the, the poster child of violations has been, you know, Huntington Beach, so.
That might be the one, actually.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McMahon, Commissioner Newman. I heard your voice, please proceed.
Pass things, Commissioner McMahon asked, asked the question I was going to ask, thank you.
Oh, copy that, Commissioner Ling, do you have any questions, sir?
I didn't know.
Perfect, all right, I've got a couple of questions. Bear with me, I heard you refer to ADUs as considered above moderate. Is ADUs considered in the count based upon the property that they're built on and the, the value of that property? Is that how that works?
No, the thing is, is that, and, and actually, we're right at this kind of changing point. Historically, ADUs and HCD has not. Allowed most jurisdictions to be able to account them at any kind of affordable level. So it's not really based on the land value or, you know, the size of the, the home or the property that they're on. But I would like to say for this upcoming cycle, actually, the Southern California Association of Governments has worked with HCD. And they have, we are able to, and there's a breakdown, so. We can now, going forward, assume certain affordability levels and it goes down to low.
Okay, that's why I was.
Very low and moderate in the future, so historically, they have not been counted that way, though.
But in the future, they will be counted that way, and do you, do you have an understanding of how that will be broken down? How, how are they doing that?
Shoot, I don't have it off the top of my head, but I could probably pull that up for you later. But yeah, it's, it's, it's a report that SCAG has provided us, I had to kind of, anyways, I, I have that.
You got it, because that would be important to us based upon the fact that, because the other thing that you're talking about is that historically roughly ten percent of our. Instruction or permits given have been for low and very low. But the request in the next cycle is going to be roughly forty seven percent of those units. So my question is, is what is the state doing to incentivize that? By understanding that ADUs is a part of it, but are there other things that the state is building into these packages to incentivize? Developers and landowners to, to create housing that's going to be affordable?
Yeah.
Tell us to do it all day long, but the question is, is will there be anybody that's going to come along with money and put their money into it? And still be able to, to stay in business? The cities can do whatever they want, so my question is, is what is, what is the state giving us? That what are the tools that we have as, as cities to incentivize this? And I know ADUs was part of that, but I'm curious what else is there besides density bonuses?
Mister Chair, I might, I might interject here, there is also a. We have an inclusionary housing requirement, but it's outdated and we're looking at updating that. Which will mean that each residential project will be required to do a certain percentage. Of affordable units within their project. It's one tool that we have that needs to be updated and we're working on that and. Within the next year or so, you should probably see that come forward as well.
Got it, that makes sense, but like I said, I'm trying to figure out what the states do, I heard a lot about what the state's going to do to penalize us. But my question is, is what is the state doing to facilitate this? Because they have to understand there's an economic process, the city doesn't build housing. We have to, we have to get developers to do it, and the question is, is what is the incentive for developers? To build this housing that we're going to be asking them to build if it's going to be forty seven percent of what they're going to have to build?
So, we can get more later on into the next item, but just a, a quick answer would be that they're also incentivizing them by allowing. More density with a certain requirements, if it's within a certain zone of transportation, for example, transportation center. They're allowing, if there's a certain affordable component to it, they're allowing more density on that, on a smaller lot, for example. Those parking requirements, all these are factors that they put into. New ways of incentivizing developers to, to come up with a economic plan. So they can build a housing with an affordable component to it.
Copy that, but yeah, like I said, even with the density bonuses, it's still roughly ten percent, correct? For any project?
Yeah, it depends on the income category, but yes, if you're providing very low or a combination very low and low, it hovers around ten percent, so. And I just wanted to, yeah, be clear, I mean, the proportions of affordability from this current Rena cycle and the future. The lower income categories only go up slightly, I mean, we just had a overall, a much lower number to deal with last time, you know, two hundred fifty five units versus. Two thousand six hundred and twenty one units, but.
Oh, I, I, if we can go back to that slide, I was under the impression it was significantly higher proportion. Maybe I read it incorrectly?
Yeah, hold on. Well, would I, yeah, hold on a second.
Yeah, because I, I, that was the first time I'd seen those numbers kind of set hard, so.
So, I mean, here, where, you can see this, right?
Not where you're in progress, can you go back to the, the, the anticipated first cycle six?
Okay.
Yeah, this one, so when you're looking at very low, the percentage that Rena allocation for very low is twenty eight percent, that's triple what we're doing.
And then. Yes, yes, it is triple what we're doing, I guess what I was just pointing out is that the, the Rena allocation from the previous cycle was roughly the same percentage.
But it's not proportional to what we've developed in the past, and that's my question.
Correct, yes, I mean, and that's why the, I mean, in this case, even though the number is much larger, the buffer becomes.
And, and that's the only reason I'm asking this question is because I don't understand how the state expects us to change. The way, the pattern of development without incentivizing the people who are actually going to be doing it. I mean, we, they can tell us to tell people to do it all day long, but I don't see how we're going to be twisting anybody's arm.
And true, I mean, and this is really an exercise in just demonstrating that we are planning for the units and they don't. Actually necessarily get built, so it's a matter of, you know, identifying feasible sites that can accommodate that number.
My next question, which is identifying is a gateway for these landowners to, or developers to, to proceed. But if we identify it and then they come to us with projects that don't match what we've identified. Are we penalized for accepting those projects? Or do we have to deny those projects based upon the fact that they're not going to be fitting the state Rena numbers?
No, we can't deny them regardless, but if they do not meet the numbers identified on the site, that's where the buffer comes into play. If we have, we would, I'd have to identify sites in excess of twenty six, twenty one. So that in the event that a project was built below the number that was identified in the site inventory. That you can point to another site and say.
Yeah, so that's my question is, is that they're putting the onus on the city to determine. This without coming up with a way, I mean, if we just, if, 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 will it be a race for all these developers to build and get their project in front of us the fastest? So that they're not the ones that are stuck trying to build these, these units at the end, like I, I, I don't understand this fully. If, if, if we keep shifting the responsibility as we run out of space in the city.
Well, you would, I mean, again, it's just, you're, you're, you have your core set of sites identified to meet your Rena, but you also. And then you have maybe potentially additional land that could be identified in the future, but when you go and do your housing element in this cycle. That's why you would create flexibility of identifying, you know, a lot more units than two thousand six hundred and twenty one. Because then, as each project comes in, it creates that flexibility. Because, yeah, historically, and, and, in, in any jurisdiction, you see this, I mean, you know, projects do not always meet. The Rena that was identified for the site. And that's where cities, when it comes to decision-making time, they can rely on that buffer to point to, well, there is this other opportunity site. You know, down the way that has not been developed. And as you can see, we still have adequate buffer or ability to absorb the Rena allocation.
So essentially, there's just kind of built into the, into the formula that we can keep kicking the can down the road.
Well, I'm, if I may, Chair Bus, I'm not sure it's kicking the can down the road because we're. It's the developer who's got to build a project on their property or the owner's property, so they have control over that and we can't control that. But to your point, under SB three thirty, there's a no net loss, right? And no net loss is what we've been talking about, and that's exactly what your example was about, which is. That if someone were to build on something that was smaller or less dense than what was allowed on that site. We have to make sure that we have ample locations where we can. Cover that, that balance or that delta, excuse me, and then show that we don't have a net loss.
That makes sense, I just have one more question, there was a mention in Mr. Lanson's question about litigation involving non-compliance. My question would be, would that litigation be something that would be initiated by a developer against the city? Or would it be initiated by the state itself? In the event that there was an issue with, with a particular property?
So, so one, one issue we have when we start to talk about litigation is we get into these incredible hypotheticals and so I. Temper with that, with, with that. There is actually different ways, the Attorney General actually has a right in extreme circumstances to come after a city for some violations of not having the housing element. Certified and things of that nature, but of course, I think the main example would be a developer who. Didn't get their project approved by the council and therefore goes to court to say they should have approved it and here's how. An agency messed up or made a mistake and not approving it and here's why. And then that's analyzed, and if they win, then there might be a order, again hypothetically, to require that city or local agency to permit. That development as proposed by the developer.
You got it, that makes sense, all right.
It could be, yeah, it could be any, it could be anyone, it could be a housing advocacy group as well as even a deep-pocketed individual.
You got it, all right, perfect. I saw Commissioner McMahon raise your hand briefly, did you have a follow-up question before I, we want to pump comments?
Actually, when you were talking about kind of kicking the can down to another property. If we get a project that is proposed that doesn't quite meet the requirements. And so you're thinking, well, we have this buffer property. We can't force the owner of that property to pick up the slack, so I don't know how that would work, I don't understand.
Well, it isn't necessarily. Well, picking up the slack because the site would have already been identified in the site inventory to produce a certain level of affordability, so.
If I may, the, the way that the law is, is written now, as Ian said earlier, the city is not actually required to build any of the units or force any of the units to be built. said earlier, the city is not actually required to build any of the units or force any of the units to be built. So it's not like, it's not somebody, I forget if it was Commissioner Bus or somebody earlier mentioned it, like a race to, you know, the developers get out quickly and so you don't have to build any affordable units and leave it for the later ones. Um, that's not really how it works. Um, because at this point in time, anyway, under the current legislation, we are not, we are not required as a city to build units or to force developers or property owners to build the, the affordable units. The only way that we would be able to do that is if as a matter of policy, the city wanted to do it would be, um, what Ms. Finley referred to earlier, the inclusionary housing ordinance. So that's really, i- if the city is interested in, you know, from, from day one, ensuring that affordable units get built and in, you know, s- spreading that out among developers and property owners, then an inclusionary housing ordinance would be the way to do that. Um, absent that, we wouldn't really have a means of requiring developers to build affordable housing. And that would be the same today and the same, you know, five years from now. If a bunch of projects got built without affordable housing, we wouldn't necessarily then be forcing those later property owners to build that affordable housing. It would just be the city's deficit on the books of affordable housing would just keep growing and growing and growing. And then we probably end up getting in trouble with the state at some point. Uh, but that wouldn't necessarily be the property owners or the developers' problems. It would be the city's problem.
That makes sense, Mr. Forbes. I appreciate that comment.
That helps. Also, thank you.
All right. Um, I was going to proceed with public comments, but I believe we don't, do not have any public speakers for this, um, section unless there's a correction on that.
No.
Perfect. Um, then, uh, we will go back to staff for any follow-up comments. Uh, Mister Holt, do you have anything further to add?
Nope, not at this time. Thank you.
Um, Mister Chair, I'd like to just conclude with, um, we will be coming forward with the housing element and draft goals and policies and, and, um, you'll have a, a whole meeting probably devoted to looking at, at the tool, different tools we have and what we're proposing to try to implement. Um, you know, this, the state mandated requirements.
You got it. Sounds excellent, Ms. Finley. All right. Um, uh, let's see here, where are we at? Commissioners, any other follow-up questions or comments? I think we're good then. Um, I can open up the, this is, uh, I can open the floor for a further discussion, but I think we're all in agreement. We're done. This point. So since this is a department report and no vote is required, we can move on to the next agenda item. Eight B, the next department report is, uh, item eight B, general plan update GPA twenty nineteen dash seven zero, seven six zero. Consideration of land use alternatives. Interim Deputy Community Development Director Finley. Would you like to introduce the members of the team that will be presenting the report?
Um, I would like to introduce to you, uh, Mister Michael Forbes, who is the deputy director as well. And he is also the project manager for the general plan update team. So I'm gonna let him introduce the team and the consultants.
Thank you, Chair Bus and members of the commission. Um, our presentation this evening is going to be given by our consultant. But really quickly, I just wanted to introduce the members of the general plan team that are here this evening. Um, in addition to Kari Finley, um, and Ian Holt, who you've already heard from this evening. We also have with us tonight Kristen Rice and Tabitha McAtee. So the five of us together, uh, compose the, uh, general plan team in-house. And we're working very closely, uh, with the city's consultants, uh, Matt Ramey from Ramey and Associates. So at this time, I will turn it over to Mister Ramey to give the presentation. And then Mister Ramey and all of us will be available for questions afterward.
Good evening, Chair and members of the Planning Commission. I'm Matt Ramey with Ramey and Associates. It's nice to meet all of you. Um, nice to see all of you this evening. Um, I'm going to, um, share my screen and go through the, the presentation. Uh, what we would like to do this evening is to give you an overview of the land use alternatives and, um, the, more importantly, the results of the community survey that we just completed, um, less than two weeks ago, or it's exactly two weeks ago. Um, so, uh, let me jump into the presentation and then I'll walk through the information. Um, I am, uh, if there's a, I'm okay with interruption as we go through this. If you all have questions, however you, however you operate is fine with me. Um, I will just go until someone, I, I end or someone interrupts me.
You're on the floor, sir.
Thank you. Okay. Now, can you all see the screen? Yes, you can see. Okay, great. Thank you. All right. So what I want to do tonight is to summarize the community engagement activities that we have, um, been, uh, undertaken for the last year and a half. Um, go over some frequently asked questions that evolved from the engagement work we have done. Uh, present the survey results, present the GPAC, the General Plan Advisory Committee's reactions to the survey results from our meeting last Thursday, um, and then outline some of the next steps in the process. We started the general plan update in twenty nineteen and so it's been just over, um, a year and a half since, um, since we began the process. There are five key steps that we are going through, existing conditions, listening and visioning, policy development, alternatives, plan development, and then review and adoption. We are right in the middle of policy development and plan alternatives. Um, we have presented, developed, and then presented three alternatives and presented a community survey. Throughout all of this process, we have undertaken quite a large number of engagement activities. Um, those activities included, well, both outreach to the community to inform them of the process and then engaging with the community to ask their opinion on different topics. And overall, we've had a pretty, um, pretty great turnout, um, and pretty good discussion from the community about the general plan and the vision for the city. Um, so we started with, um, a citywide mailing in utility bills. This allowed everyone in the community to hear about the general plan process. We created database and made, um, emails and phone calls to organizations and neighborhood groups, all of them in the community. There have been twenty-nine articles, probably more at this point, um, in the Acorn about the general plan. We have a general plan advisory committee meeting. We have fourteen GPAC meetings, which, uh, is comprised of twenty-four members of the community. And then between twenty-five and fifty-plus people, um, have attended each of these meetings. I believe there were almost ninety at the la- at the meeting last week, um, watching. We've had two public workshops, um, and two community forums with guest speakers. We've had pop-up workshops when we could have those, where we went around the community and, um, just presented information on the general plan and, um, we were in public places where people could come and, um, and just ask us questions and take brief surveys. And we had over a thousand people respond to that. We've done focus groups, um, interviews with individuals. We've had three online surveys with over three thousand, um, separate respondents. We were part of a citywide statistically valid survey a year ago. And then there's been a pretty extensive social media campaign with hundreds of posts. So we've, um, tried in this time to really blanket the community with information about the general plan to make sure that people know about the process and are able to participate. We believe that the general plan is the community's plan and therefore it's really important that we hear from the community. The most recent activity, as, um, as you know, is the, uh, creation and discussion of the general plan land use alternatives. Um, the land use alternatives were released, uh, in early February. And then we had a general plan advisory committee meeting and joint public workshop on February second. Um, we had over two hundred and fifty people attend that meeting. Um, we knew that, um, that the alternatives were, were complicated and there's a lot of information there. Um, we had a briefing book that we published that was online. It's about seventy-five pages describing the general plan update process, the reason for it, the engagement activities, and essentially how we got to where we were. Um, so the first public workshop, the workshop we had on February second was an overview of the land use alternatives. Um, then for the six weeks, um, we also released an online survey and paper survey at that time. Um, for the next six weeks, we held a whole series of meetings with groups and individuals. We had four office hours where we were just present to allow people to come and ask questions. There were twenty-five neighborhood and stakeholder meetings. Um, and I have to really compliment city staff for doing a tremendous job organizing the meetings and then attending them and reaching out to and attending any, just about any meeting that they were asked to attend. There were articles, um, in the Acorn and Star newspapers, as well as ad, ads in those papers, an extensive Twitter, Facebook, and Instagram campaign. There were eight emails, eight separate email campaigns sent out about the process. Um, there were two thousand five hundred hard copy flyers, um, distributed about the survey and then two hundred surveys, um, distributed and then email blasts. So again, we tried to engage as many members of the community as we can in this topic. Um, and I know that, you know, I personally spent many evenings, um, with members of the community answering questions and, and talking about the alternatives. Um, and I have to say that the office hours and the neighborhood and stakeholder meetings were really a gr- a great way for members of the, for me to interact with members of the community and really explore different ideas in a way that, that's difficult at a public workshop. So while they were time-consuming, I very much appreciated, um, the feedback and the interaction that I had with the community. The survey itself was opened from February second to March fifteenth and there were over twenty-one hundred completed surveys. Um, this, within the survey, there were open-ended, um, questions or opportunities for comments. And we received over six thousand individual comments, um, within the survey. We also put the alternatives briefing book online. Um, that's the seventy-five page book describing the different alternatives. And we allowed people to make comments on the briefing book at different places. So people could share their ideas, give recommendations, tell us things they liked, tell us things they didn't like. And then people could respond to those comments with a thumbs up or thumbs down. And we received over a thousand comments in that briefing book as well, um, as well as about a dozen and a half comments on interactive maps that we also had online. So overall, in my experience, there was a tremendous amount of interest and a tremendous amount of participation in this survey, especially considering it was only open for six weeks. Um, I'd like to now just go over, in this process, we heard people ask questions. Um, there was some confusion. Um, some of the questions that were asked were actually pretty similar to the questions that the Planning Commission asked about the housing element in the previous conversation. So I want to just go over a few of these, um, to start with before we get into the survey results. Uh, so the first is probably the most basic question, which is, why are we doing this? You know, why, why does this even need to happen? Um, and, you know, as you all know, the general plan is the long-range vision for the city. It's the constitution for the city of Thousand Oaks. And the last time the, the land use map was comprehensively looked at was in nineteen seventy, so fifty-one years ago. Um, and since then, a lot has changed in the city. Um, and even in the last twenty years, a lot has changed in the city. Most jurisdictions update their general plan every ten to twenty years comprehensively. And so the city has never actually comprehensively updated its, um, its general plan in the, in the modern times. Um, so w- why do we need to update the land use map besides that it's, um, was out of date? So the first is that the demographic and economic conditions have really changed in the city since the land use map was created. Um, again, you can think back, the city had probably thirty-five thousand people when it was, um, the land use map was created. It now has, you know, over a hundred and twenty thousand people. Um, the existing land use map does not provide for a diversity of housing types. As I mentioned, we did a significant amount of community engagement throughout the process. And one thing that we heard over and over again from many people, not everybody, but many people, is that they'd like to have a wider diversity of housing types within the city. Um, the, um, residential capacity needs to be reallocated from, um, from the established residential areas to where additional housing can be accommodated. Um, and that's needed in order to meet both the Rena numbers and all, and more importantly, to meet the vision that members of the community have said they wanted of having a wider diversity of housing types. Um, the city, um, cannot provide its fair share of regional housing demand without changes to the existing land use map. Um, and then new uses are needed to meet these different community objectives that we heard through engagement. Then the question is, what are the land use alternatives? Um, some people thought that we actually had completed the general plan. This document, the alternatives briefing book was referred to on more than one occasion as, um, as the general plan. It is not the general plan. Um, the alternatives briefing book is really a way of presenting three different versions of future growth and development in the city. Um, so it identifies different ways that the city can meet objectives that were identified through the community engagement process. So what we did was we heard for a year and a half, we heard about what the community, um, wanted to see. We asked community members through surveys and pop-up workshops to identify locations where new development could go in order to meet community objectives. We asked about areas that should be preserved with no new development happening. Um, and all of that information, um, gave us a guide into what we should do for the land use alternative to test the values and ideas. Um, they are the basis for continued discussion leading to a preferred alternative. And with over twenty-one hundred, um, responses to the survey, six thousand comments in the survey, a thousand additional comments, we certainly are getting community discussion. And I'm sure you all have heard from your friends and neighbors about this process. Um, and there are, um, you know, there's a lot of conversation going on, which is really what we want because part of the general plan update is to have a community conversation about the future of the city. So i- we are right in that process now. We're, we are right where we want to be and need to be with this. And the preferred alternative is likely going to be a combination of the alternatives. We didn't create the alternatives necessarily so that you would just, just pick one. And as you probably saw in the survey results, we asked more targeted questions about different elements of the different alternatives so that we could get feedback on the community's preferences. One of the other sources of confusion is this question of what is the difference between capacity and growth projections? The capacity of the city is based on every parcel's maximum allowed density. Um, it is if you take the, um, the maximum dwelling units per acre on a site or maximum FAR and you multiply that by the acres of that land use designation, that gives you the maximum amount. That gives you the maximum development capacity. It is a number that is not going to be achieved. Um, no city have I ever seen that is able to achieve maximum density for a variety of reasons. Most importantly, um, for a city such as Thousand Oaks, which is predominantly built out, it means that areas need to be redeveloped. And there is a lot less financial incentive to redevelop a parcel that has an existing use on it than to develop a parcel that is a greenfield site that is vacant. So there are very few vacant parcels in the city. And the capacity is also referred to as buildout or total buildout of the city. The growth projection is an expected growth set in a period of time. And it is significantly, significantly below what the overall capacity of the city is. Um, so it is used for, um, growth projections are used for a realistic estimate of the amount of growth based on market conditions in a period of time. So, um, we have not yet completed the growth projections for the project. Um, but we know that it's going to be significantly less than the maximum, the buildout capacity of the city. There were a lot of numbers that were, um, discussed and that are being thrown around in the process. And so I'd like to clarify a, a few of these. Um, so the first is, um, eighty-one thousand one hundred and twenty-four housing units. This is the citywide capacity. It is the maximum amount of development that is currently allowed in your land use element, in your land use map. Um, measure E says that we cannot change, we cannot increase this number. SB three thirty, which was mentioned earlier, says we cannot lower this number. We can move around where the capacity is within the city, but we can't, we can't reduce it. So the, the citywide capacity, um, is going to remain, and it does in all of the alternatives, at approximately eighty-one thousand one hundred and twenty-four. We're not going to quibble over a couple of units at this point, really, but we know that that's the target that we're trying to hit. There are currently about forty-eight thousand housing units that have been built in the city, that are currently built right now. Um, and that number, as you probably know, if you look at the evolution of the city over time, that in the seventies and eighties, the number of housing units per year, um, rose pretty precipitously. Um, and that in the, um, by the, the mid nineties, it had really slowed down. And that by the last decade, the, um, the rate of growth had decreased significantly. So right now, um, there are forty-eight thousand housing units in the city. And if you subtract um, forty-eight thousand from eighty-one thousand, you get thirty-three thousand. And so that is the approximate amount of unbuilt capacity in the city right now. Then there's the Rena number, which is what you talked about previously of twenty-six, twenty-one, which is the amount of land that needs to be identified. which is the amount of land that needs to be identified for the, the sixth housing element cycle. Again, it doesn't need to be built, as was mentioned earlier, but the city needs to be able to provide the space in order for housing to be built. Okay, now that we're through some of the frequently asked questions, I'm going to jump to the survey results. As I mentioned, there were over twenty one hundred total responses in the unclean survey, two thousand one hundred and twenty seven, to be precise. The majority of those happened online, just over twenty one hundred. And then there were about twenty five hard copy versions that were given to us that were input. The survey was open from February 2nd to March 15th. It had a total of thirty three questions. Six of the questions were open ended questions, which means we asked the question and just allowed people to write responses. Sixteen of the questions were multiple, not multiple choice, but were your closed ended, where you pick one. And one of the options was whether you wanted to see something different. And so sixteen of those questions had spaces for comments. And then five of the questions were demographic questions. Right off the bat, ninety seven percent of all respondents lived in the city, and some of those both lived and worked in the city. The full report of all of the comments, the, all of the raw comments are available on the Thousand Oaks website. And there are two versions right now on the website. One is just the closed ended responses, and the other includes all of the open ended responses, and that one's about four hundred pages long. The, we looked at the demographics and we start with the demographics to see how well the survey is broadly representative of the community. I do want to point out, this is not a statistically valid survey. This is a convenience survey or an opt in survey. And we did this, we did the convenience or opt in survey for, for a variety of reasons, mostly because we wanted to give every member of the community a chance to weigh in on the process. So what we do, because it is not a statistically valid survey, is we look at the demographics and compare that to the city as the whole to see how well it represents the city. So overall, we asked the question of how long people have lived in Thousand Oaks. And so the majority of people, or almost, almost half of the people, forty six percent, have lived in the city for twenty one years or longer. And the group with the most responses was those who have lived in the city for eleven to twenty years. And a relatively small number, less than seven percent, have lived in the city for five years or less. This means that the people who have been here the longest are, are more likely to have taken the survey. We asked the zip code of the respondent, and as you can see here, there's pretty good representation across all of the geographies of the city. So it wasn't weighted towards, completely towards one area. And again, these are, these are good results to see from a survey, to see that it's spread across age, or it's spread across the amount of time people have lived in the city, and also with the zip code for geographic representation. We asked survey respondents their age and then compared that, which is what you see in the dark blue on the left. And we asked, and then we compared that to the census numbers for the city. And what you can see is, except for the, the eighteen or twenty four and under, that the profile from the twenty five and, and up is actually pretty close to what the profile of the census has for those living in the city. So the survey is underrepresented, particularly in those under eighteen, which is not a surprise. And, and still underrepresented for the eighteen to twenty four. The twenty five to thirty four is pretty close. It's slightly overrepresented for the, for all of the other age groups. So essentially, this skewed, not a surprise, but compared to the population, it's skewed older. We also did a comparison of the survey results to the, to the statistically valid survey that was done just over a year ago, or approximately a year ago. And what we see here is that it's still pretty close in terms of the profile. It's not exact, but it's pretty close in terms of the profile of the residents. On the right is the statistically valid survey, the six hundred and seventy people who took that survey. And on the left is the twenty one hundred plus who took the survey on the alternatives. We asked about demographics and how people identify themselves in terms of race, ethnicity. And overall, on the left is, in the, in the dark blue is the results of the survey. And the, on the right is the census estimates. And what we see is that the white population is overrepresented in the survey. Again, this is not a surprise for us with the engagement effort, where seventy eight percent of the people identified as white compared to sixty nine percent in the city. And that the big differences really came with the Hispanic and Latino, and then Asian was slightly lower. But if you sort of look across the board at the responses, it was about a ten percent difference and nine percent difference. And so again, it's not surprising, but, but it is not a bad representation of the city overall. I'm going to jump into the results now, the specific results of the survey. We started the survey with asking a very, some very broad questions about perspectives on development in the city. First question we asked was, and I'm not going to go through every question in the survey, I'm going to go through a lot of them, but not every question. So question two, we asked individuals to select all the areas where housing or mixed use should be added. And the Rancho Canejo area and downtown and Thousand Oaks Boulevard area were the two top vote getters with this question. We, and, and actually, I'm going to, I'm going to go to one of the, one of the comments from the general plan advice, some general plan advisory committee members at our meeting last week, was they were surprised that not a lot of people said that the area where the Oaks Mall is and Jan's Marketplace, they were surprised that that only got eighteen percent of people who said that they would want to have housing in that area. Because that's actually a little different than what we've heard throughout the process thus far. The third question was whether, whether people agree with our approach of protecting the character of single family residential areas and transferring the capacity, remaining capacity into the areas of change. For those who haven't read the briefing book, what we did was, we know that there are areas, there are single family residential areas that are allowed to go, to be built up to fifteen units an acre, which is essentially townhomes, perhaps small apartment buildings, but they are designated, they're really single family areas right now. Under new state law, you can build up to, people have the right through the objective standards that were mentioned previously, to build up to the maximum density. So it would be possible, if someone wanted to, to come in and, and try and build a duplex, triplex, fourplex in an established single family area because of the land use designation that the city has right now. And so what we heard throughout the process was, the majority of people want to protect the, the low scale, single family character of those neighborhoods. And so we asked the question of if we, is it okay to protect those areas by transferring the capacity that's there over into other areas of the city, what we call the areas of change, which represent about eight percent of the city's land, to think about whether we could transfer some of that development capacity over there to, to build a diversity of housing types, but also to protect the single family areas. And what we see here is that eighty five percent of people either agreed or strongly agreed with the direction that we were taking, which is a pretty overwhelming response here. And only seven, only ten percent disagreed with that approach. Next question was, we asked whether people would support increasing the maximum density of multifamily residential development from thirty units an acre to forty five units an acre in the areas of change, if the building height and setbacks generally remain the same. What this would mean is that you would still be able to build perhaps a fifty foot building with the same building parameters, but you would have slightly smaller units in order to be able to achieve a higher density. And seventy percent of people said that yes, that we should allow, the city should allow densities of up to forty five units per acre in the same building form. Only twenty one percent said that they want to keep it at thirty units an acre. And what we're seeing here throughout the survey is that approximately ten to twenty percent of the people voted one way with the majority voting a, a different way here. So we also, we, we then went through the, there are five different sub areas that we identified for areas of change. So I'm going to step back because I didn't cover this previously in the presentation. In the year and a half before we did the alternatives, one of the exercises that I had mentioned previously that we did was an online survey and working with the GPAC to ask them where they thought new development should go. And there were exercises virtually and in person where we gave people stickers representing different uses, and they put them on the map where they thought new development should go. And essentially overwhelmingly, the, the area that people identified was Rancho Canejo, Oaks Mall, Jan's Marketplace, down Thousand Oaks Boulevard, and then, and mostly down Thousand Oaks Boulevard to the east side of the city. And so there were also some people who said move housing and put housing throughout the whole city. But the majority of people said, you have this kind of corridor, this, this band in the middle of the city, and that's where new development should be focused. And that area, once we, once we did the numbers, represents less than eight percent of the total land area in the city. And even within those areas of change, only about half would, would even be considered for change because the rest is like residential or the auto dealers, they weren't changing at all. So what I'm going to do now is walk through each of the areas, present at a high level the different alternatives, and then, and then show you the results of the survey. So these are the three alternatives that we came up with. It's a little hard, I know they're, they're kind of start blurring together when you look at them. So I just want to highlight a few things. I'm going to assume that most people, most of you have skimmed through the briefing book and looked at the survey results. So alternative one is, is essentially trying to have a balance of industrial uses. The dark gray is called industrial flex, which allows for office and R and D. And then the light gray is light industrial, which allows lower scale office and light industrial uses. And so the three alternatives have, are vary in terms of the balance of industrial flex to industrial uses. And then where the mixed use development, which is what you see in the purple, is located. And so alternative one has, has a balance of light industrial and industrial flex. And it takes a portion of the area in Rancho Canejo and converts that to mixed use with the idea that you would allow people, you would allow projects, developments to be built that are mixed use with residential uses to better integrate residential and office together to create mixed use districts. South of the freeway, the Alice property is identified as mixed use along with the, just a small area just south of that, with the remainder, for the most part, at the red is commercial, and so the red and the pink are commercial uses. Alternative two takes a slightly different approach. It leaves the, all of the area that's currently designated as industrial and jobs, as industrial and jobs, and then moves the mixed use on the north side of the freeway to the existing commercial areas. South of the freeway, it expands the mixed use further east, and then keeps the commercial uses over by vent two, over here. The alternative three focuses at, more on jobs and expands the amount of industrial flex, and then puts all of the mixed use development on the south side of the freeway, leaving the north side of the freeway for commercial and jobs and employment for the most part. And I will say that all of the alternatives, I had mentioned this previously, but all of the alternatives in their entirety from alternatives one, two, and three, across all the alternatives, have the same amount of residential development. So the, the amount of residential development was held constant in all of them, and really, it was an exercise in looking at different locations where the residential could go. For jobs, alternatives one and alternative two were really pretty close in terms of the number of jobs that were created. And alternative three is pretty much the jobs alternative, where we tried to maximize the number of jobs in the city. And so that had about twenty five percent, if I remember correctly, about twenty five percent more jobs. For question five, we asked about whether the job, what the approach should be to jobs in Rancho Canejo, and whether there should be a balance between industrial flex and industrial low, or whether it should be more industrial flex, or whether people had no preference. And so overwhelmingly, people said they want to see a balance of the mix of types of, of job producing uses, industrial flex and industrial low. Seventy percent of people had that preference. We asked to what extent the mixed use development should be integrated with industrial and commercial uses in Rancho Canejo. So the, there was a little bit more, more of a split on this one. So the first one is, was alternative one, where it was mixed use along Lawrence Drive. And forty three percent of people said that that was their preference. The alternative, the second one, alternative two, had, took the area that's commercial and put some on the, on the western edge and converted some of that to mixed use as a potential land use to allow housing there, but that only got nine percent positive response. And then alternative three was really to keep the Rancho Canejo area for employment only. That was thirty eight percent. The next question was the extent to which the respondents agreed with the statement that the general plan should allow mixed use development of up to four stories and forty five units per acre if it reduced the amount of housing that was needed elsewhere in the city. In other words, should there be new residential development at forty five units an acre in Rancho Canejo? And fifty seven percent of the people strongly agreed, and seven, seventeen percent agreed. And so here, we, we see that about twenty three percent disagreed with that statement. So again, it's, it's very directional in terms of housing in the Rancho Canejo area. And when we asked which alternative best matches your vision for the future, it was alternative one and alternative three. Alternative three, again, to remind you, had no residential north of the freeway, and it added more mixed use south of the freeway, and alternative one was a balance between the two. The second area is the Moore Park Road and West Thousand Oaks Boulevard area. I'm going to walk through these alternatives just to sort of, to orient you. Right kind of up the middle, north, south, top to bottom here is Moore Park Road. You see Thousand Oaks Boulevard, Hillcrest, and then the thumb here is Thousand Oaks, is the Oaks Mall. The big triangle piece, purple triangle piece in this image is Jan's Marketplace. So alternative one focuses development in a couple of nodes in this area while leaving the rest as commercial. So it focuses mixed use development around the Oaks Mall in Jan's Marketplace, and then on the eastern edge of Thousand Oaks Boulevard. This is a modification from, of geography from the existing specific plan for TO Boulevard, which had mixed use development all the way over to the one oh one freeway. And then on the west, on the east side of Moore Park Road, it maintains the existing commercial uses. Alternative two was more of a spread of the different alternatives, spread of, of development and spread of mixed use throughout the area. So you can see here, there's a greater expanse of the light purple, which is mixed use low, both in the Oaks Mall area as well as on Thousand Oaks Boulevard, and then as well as north along Moore Park Road, leaving a kind of an area of commercial right around the one oh one freeway. Alternative three created more focused development and created more, more jobs. And so it did that by taking the area north of Hillcrest and making it industrial flex, taking the area, a portion of the area south of Hillcrest, between Hillcrest and one oh one, and allowing commercial uses, which could include offices or stores and retail or hotels. The, the thumbnail here on the Oaks Mall is, is residential, neighborhood and medium. And then it created two more higher intensity nodes of mixed use on the eastern edge of Thousand Oaks Boulevard, which is mixed use high in this, in this map, as well as in Jan's Marketplace. So again, these alternatives are playing with different ideas. So again, these alternatives are playing with different ideas about where mixed use development can go in order to get feedback. And then we asked a series of questions on this. This question, question number ten, we provided six images and asked whether, asked people to identify their reaction to each of these six images at Jan's Marketplace and the Oaks Mall. And this is a question that really focuses on these two large parcels because they have been identified as large opportunity sites throughout the process. Without going through the details, the image number four, which is essentially retail, two-story retail with lots of public space, eighty-seven percent of people like it or love it for that area. That's not a surprise. The one with the most, no way, and that was actually one of the responses, was no way, I don't want this there, is the five-story office building here, and thirty-three percent said no way. In the top three images, it's multifamily or mixed use housing. Actually, number two is probably townhomes or stacked flats. And there was, you know, a lot of folks said, between sixty-eight percent and seventy-five percent said they either love it or they like it. So this tells us that there are a lot of people who want to see development at the Oaks Mall and Jan's Marketplace as three to five-story mixed use or residential development. Question eleven asked for the area along Moore Park Road between Thousand Oaks Boulevard and just north of Wilbur, whether that should maintain the current mix of retail and commercial uses and/or whether it should be, mixed use should be allowed in this area. And a large number of folks said essentially keep mostly commercial uses in this area. So in other words, Moore Park Road should for the most part be and remain a commercial corridor with a diversity of commercial and retail uses. The next question was asked about the area of Thousand Oaks Boulevard between Moore Park and Boden Camp. And we gave three images and asked people whether they liked it, loved it, were agnostic or didn't like it at all and no way they don't want to see it there. And what we see here is that these are essentially four to five-story residential and mixed use buildings. And between seventy and seventy-eight percent of respondents said they either love it or they like it. And so again, kind of very directional that this is from the people, the twenty-one hundred people who took the survey, the majority wanted, were accepting of these types of development in this area. When we asked which alternative best matches your vision, it was alternative one, which was some nodes of mixed use, or alternative three, which had nodes but also more commercial and industrial uses. The next area is what we call downtown and Thousand Oaks Boulevard. This area extends from twenty-three all the way to essentially where the auto malls are on Thousand Oaks Boulevard. While this area is relatively large in terms of geography from north to south, the majority of the alternatives have almost exactly the same land use designations off of Thousand Oaks Boulevard. Alternative one is the nodal approach where high density, mixed use high was identified in the downtown area. And so this is the big blue here right along the 101 freeway is Civic Arts Plaza. And so you can, so you can see that the darker purple is mixed use, mixed use high, and then the rest is really mixed use low with the light pink as commercial uses. Alternative two spread low and medium density throughout this area without much differentiation. And then, that was alternative two, and then alternative three was a mix between the two with some medium and some low mixed use throughout the area. We asked for the downtown area, so we asked what types of development people wanted to see in terms of intensity. Forty-five percent of people responded that they wanted to see five stories and sixty units an acre. Thirty-two percent said that the maximum they would want to see is four stories and forty-five units an acre. Only seventeen percent said that they want to maintain the existing designation of mixed use low, which is three stories and thirty units an acre. And then six percent said none of the above, which for the most part meant when this response was here, it usually meant that they didn't like any of them. I forgot to mention that previously. And the written responses that we got here were mostly negative. So if someone liked what they saw in the questions, they just typically answered the question and said that they like one of them. If they didn't like any of them, or they didn't like the ideas at all, or they had other ideas, they would say none of the above, and again, the majority was negative. So when you start looking through, you'll see that the none of the above is pretty small and those are the ones that tend to be negative. We asked whether the city should allow multifamily residential buildings without a requirement for commercial uses in some areas along Thousand Oaks Boulevard in this section. In other words, because retail is more of a dying industry, especially with COVID and there is more retail in the city than is needed right now, you know, could some of those retail or commercial parcels be redeveloped with just residential without any commercial or retail development? And almost seventy-five percent of people said that they would agree with that statement, so three out of every four. We asked which alternative best matches your vision for the future, and forty-three percent said alternative one. This is about the same percentage that forty-three percent said that they would want sixty units an acre and five stories in this downtown, in the downtown area. Alternative, I'm sorry, the next area is Westlake and East End. You can see the 101 freeway and then the, you can see Thousand Oaks Boulevard along the top. These alternatives had slightly less variation. The auto malls, which you see in sort of the light pink here, were the same all across the board. And the parcel kind of on the left-hand side, south of the freeway, this is the Kmart site with a mixed use project that is currently going through the process right now. Alternative one created more mixed use development north of the freeway, including on the south side of Thousand Oaks Boulevard, right at Westlake Boulevard, but then also on the north side of Thousand Oaks Boulevard. This area is not included in Thousand Oaks Boulevard's specific plan, so the current designation for this area is, right now, is commercial. It maintained majority, it expanded mixed use on the east end of Thousand Oaks Boulevard, but also maintained some areas for jobs. And then on the south side, there's a large area that was essentially maintained for jobs with Westlake Plaza as mixed use in this alternative. Alternative two kept more commercial uses north of the freeway, but then expanded the amount of mixed use to integrate jobs with housing on the south side of the freeway. Alternative three is the jobs-focused alternative. It created a kind of more intense node of mixed use at Westlake and Thousand Oaks Boulevard, but then kept a lot of the rest of the area as industrial flex or commercial or a mix of industrial low and industrial flex. So again, alternative three is the jobs alternative. When we asked what best matches your vision for the employment district near Hampshire Road and Towns Gate, and that's this area along, on the south side of the freeway that's gray in alternative one, we call this the Towns Gate area, this is Towns Gate going right through the road name. And the, almost half of the respondents said that they want to expand the employment focus of the area by adding industrial flex, but really a lot said that they want to keep commercial uses. A very relatively small number, twenty-five percent, twenty-seven percent said that they would consider adding mixed use to that area. So this tells us through the results that people really want to see that area maintained for jobs and not allow mixed use and residential in that area. For the Westlake Plaza and Center, we asked what best meets your vision. Maintain commercial-only uses, which is alternative three. Allow for mixed use development at thirty units an acre, alternative two, or allow for mixed use at forty-five units an acre, alternative one. Overwhelmingly, people said that they want to maintain that area just for commercial without residential. We asked whether the area at the intersection of Thousand Oaks Boulevard and Westlake should maintain its current focus on retail and shopping, or should mixed use be allowed? The results here were pretty split between the alternatives. And alternative two, which is actually the first one here with thirty percent, was essentially maintain the existing amount of existing commercial uses. Alternative one allowed for some mixed use development. Alternative three allowed for a lot more mixed use development. So about sixty-five percent, two-thirds, responded that they would want to see some amount of mixed use development at this intersection, although there's not necessarily clarity on where or how much from this survey. We asked for the area that is the current office area on the east end of the city along Thousand Oaks Boulevard, what people thought should happen there. Alternative one was expand the potential for jobs but allow residential and mixed use development. So that's essentially just adding some mixed use. Twenty-six percent wanted that. Twenty-two percent said really just maintain the focus on retail and entertainment and office uses. And then alternative three was to create, to keep the employment uses but allow more intense employment, to create more of an office, intense office district to spark some redevelopment in that area. And forty-two percent said that that was their preference here. And so again, it's sort of, the directionality with this is that for that area, there was a preference for maintaining a strong jobs focus. Seven percent had other ideas and three percent had no preference. When we asked which alternative best matches your vision, alternative three was selected more than any other. That was mixed use on all four corners of Westlake and Thousand Oaks Boulevard with limited, very limited mixed use on the south side of the freeway. Ten percent said none of the above. The last area is a concept that came up throughout the process, which is this idea of Village Centers. We have, if you see on the map here, there are seven commercial, existing commercial areas that were identified throughout the process as the, have a potential of redeveloping either with a mix of uses or to redevelop with a better mix of commercial uses in a pattern that creates more of a neighborhood feel and a neighborhood character. The three alternatives, we didn't go through each of the seven areas, we kind of grouped them together. Alternative one was a, was a mix between some mixed use low, which is thirty units an acre and fifty feet, or commercial neighborhood. And so there was just kind of a split between those two throughout the seven areas. Alternative two was to just keep everything as commercial but to essentially redevelop it in a nicer pattern. And alternative three was to allow all mixed use low throughout all of them. And the results here were directional in that almost sixty percent of people said that they want to keep the areas commercial and not allow residential uses. And twenty-six percent said only allow some of those uses, some of the shopping centers to allow residential development. So again, there's some directionality here where more people, twice as many, wanted to keep the shopping centers as commercial. At the very end, we asked whether, now that people have reviewed the alternatives, which one best matches their vision for the future? And here we added a couple of different options. So we not only have alternatives one, two, and three, we said that you can pick a combination of the alternatives. You can pick the existing general plan. So we basically said no change, that was this option, or none of the above. And what we found is that only seventeen percent picked none of the above and/or the existing general plan. A lot of the comments under none of the above here and in other ones were, well, some of them, not a lot, were, you know, people wanted to keep the city as it is today and they were afraid of losing a really good thing, which I think everybody understands. So again, there's some directionality here where alternative one and alternative three were really significantly higher than the other alternatives from this survey. We then presented these results to the General Plan Advisory Committee meeting and then led a discussion. So the comments that I'm going to talk about are just the comments of individual members. They are not, they are not a consensus by any means among the group. And only about half of the G-PAC members spoke at that meeting. So we asked people what they were surprised about in terms of what they saw from the survey results that surprised them or that was different than what they expected. And what came up, I think the most of anyone was that the Oaks Mall and Jan's Marketplace were not, there was not overwhelming comments from the survey that those areas should be, have the potential to redevelop as mixed use development. It did come across in, when we showed the photos, but not in one of the other questions when we asked about Jan's Marketplace and Moore Park Road. And so there was some kind of surprise about that because the G-PAC had previously said they see that as an area for allowing new mixed use development as well as to allow for changes because the retail landscape in the city has changed.
Mr. Ramey, can I ask a quick question, if that's okay, Chair of Us?
Yeah, I actually, I'll have like two more slides.
Oh, I'll wait, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, it's fine. Keep, put a pin in that, we'll come back to it, and I can go back to these slides. So the Village Centers, there was some surprise that there was not as much interest in the Village Centers as mixed use. Again, these are just responses of a few members of the G-PAC, but I wanted to report what they had said since they're our advisory group. There was some support for housing, new housing types spread throughout the city from G-PAC members. There was an encouragement of having new job opportunities throughout the city. And then there were a series of other comments. One that was made was to, a reminder to look at the general plan as the blueprint for the next thirty to forty years. So think big and think way into the future and don't just think about the next five to eight years, which is what the housing element tells us to do. So in other words, don't just focus on the numbers, but focus on the big picture vision of the city. There were several comments that change is okay but should be measured and slow. There should be some built-in flexibility to allow for changing conditions. There were concerns raised about some of the impacts of development for traffic, parking, and others. And there was certainly comments that echoed previous surveys about maintaining views and open space in the city and that that's really important. Okay. Like I said, Mr. Lance, and I'm almost done. Should I leave the slide up if you want to ask that first question or should I stop doing this?
I can go ahead and end your screen sharing if you can.
Sure.
If we need to go back to it, we can.
Absolutely.
Appreciate that.
Take some water.
All right, thank you very much for that presentation, Mr. Ramey. I will, I was gonna open with, do any of my commissioners have any questions? But I will go ahead and let Mr. Lance lead up, he seems very eager.
I apologize for jumping the gun, but you were on an issue that I was hoping to get a specific question about. Is, as to the malls, both the Jan's Mall and the Oaks, were they involved in the discussion process? Did they give you any comments about the survey?
About the survey, I'm gonna maybe turn to staff to ask that. I know that staff had met with them. So Michael, Kristen, do you guys want to take over?
Yes, we did talk with both of them on a couple of occasions. And I believe that they, I know at least one, if not both of them, submitted formal comment letters through the process. So we're in the process still of compiling all the comments that we received and we'll get all those posted on the website and make those available to you before the meeting when you're considering the preferred alternative. The comments, the one comment that I'm remembering, the Oaks did provide a written letter. And the one comment that I'm remembering from them is that they, they said it was important to them that the entire property be given the same land use designation. And they were in favor of a mixed use designation to give them flexibility. I think the general message that we heard from both Jan's and the Oaks was just that they both are interested in having as much flexibility as possible in developing their properties in the future because there's just so much uncertainty right now with retail and commercial and movie theaters and, you know, not really knowing what the economic situation of all of their tenants is going to be in the future. They, they're just interested in having a lot of flexibility, which would include the mixed use ability.
Okay, I just was curious whether they were incorporated with part of the discussion process and it sounds like, well, here are their more formalized results at some point in the future.
Yes, yeah, they were, they were among several of major property owners that we met with and had discussions with.
Okay, Mr. Ramey, I want to first of all congratulate you, by the way, it's a fantastic job. I have to say personally, reading through the briefing book, I did the part with I have to say personally, reading through the briefing book, I I did the part with all the comments, which took me a very long time to get through because amazingly, a lot of our citizens wanted to make sure that their comments were were heard. And again, I really appreciated the fact they were able to put a little pinpoint and and really direct the comment to that thing. So that that was a really fantastic process. And again, thank you to you. And by the way, all the citizens that gave their comments because that was a really huge part of me trying to understand a lot of what the interpretation and the feeling about it was. One thing, and again, I kind of want to make sure we're all talking the same things so that everybody understands. You said that against twenty-six, twenty-two or twenty-one that we have to identify. When you say identify, do we not currently have in our general plan an ability to identify twenty-six, twenty-one units?
We, there is not the current capacity at the densities that are allowed with vacant sites in order to meet the twenty-six, in order to meet the current Reno. So we, and again, I, you know, we, we think of the general plan in sort of two ways. And, you know, I'm going to answer the question by sort of not answering the question at the same time. I apologize. But, you know, there there is this piece of the general plan, which is the housing element and this number that we have to meet. There is a bigger piece of the general plan, which is all of the engagement that we have done throughout the process and asking people what they want to see in the future of the city in the next twenty, thirty, forty years. And so, you know, there, yes, there is that piece. We do need it for for the housing element. But, you know, we also asked people some pretty open-ended questions about what they want to see and, you know, where they want to see development. And and the results in the survey were, you know, it wasn't, it wasn't mixed. I mean, it was pretty directional from the people who took the survey. So, you know, there's more to it than just those housing elements. And I just want to stress vision over the specifics.
No, I believe me, and that's why it was important to get all those questions. So I'm glad you did that. You mentioned at some point the specific plan that the city has. What happens to the specific plan by virtue of this general plan amendment?
Great question. The specific plan would need to at some point be amended if there are changes in in land use as a result. So for example, if the decision is made to essentially maintain thirty units an acre and the current general, the current regulations along the entire corridor, it might not need to be amended if there are, you know, for example, in the downtown area, if there's a desire to increase the density to forty-five units an acre or anywhere else on the corridor, you would have to have changes if there are areas that are currently allowed for mixed use, but maybe we put them to back to commercial, which is the existing use, you'd have to amend the plan.
And and just in terms of looking again at planning versus building, specific plan, do you have any idea or does Stephanie have any idea how many actual projects have been built under the specific plan since it was enacted?
Like mixed use project, like mixed use residential?
I I'm assuming that was part of it, yes.
Michael, do you want to, or Ian?
The 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 two projects that are the recently completed Lupe's and the two nine nine that's under construction now, I believe are the only two. But Cory, can you correct me if I'm wrong? There was another one that was approved. The address is escaping me, but it was across the street from City Hall. That one was approved through the pre-screen process, but ended up never moving forward. So the units that were allocated to that went back into the bank. But as far as approved and moved forward to construction, Lupe's and two nine nine are the only two so far.
And and two units or two projects in how many years? When was it that the specific plan was enacted?
That's a good question. I actually don't know off the top of my head.
Around two thousand twelve. And then there was right afterward, there was actually one other apartment project that's not on the Thousand Oaks Boulevard frontage, Yolo.
Okay, so again, not not too many projects over the course of nine years.
No.
Two thousand and eleven is when it was adopted, so about ten years.
And Mr. Lance, and there have been a couple apartment complex projects that were approved and and used allocations from the specific plan twenty, but they were not on the Boulevard.
Okay, okay.
We'll just mention.
It highlights the pace of change with redevelopment, which is what in our experience happens.
Uh, Mr. Ramey, one one thing you also kind of, one of your slides, I think you've made a comment. And again, there is no single-family housing in the state of California by virtue of ADUs. But you said something even additionally that by virtue of our current general plan, somebody could have put up a fourplex to their property. Is that true?
Well, they can now. So there's been changes, and this is part of the issue. So there's been changes both in in state law as well as in and as well as in court cases. So this is, I'll admit, a little bit outside of my area of expertise. But the the essence of it is that that jurisdictions need to allow development at up to the maximum amount of development that is allowed in the general plan. Previous to this, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna get wonky here for a second, but it is important, so I apologize. Previous to this, you could do something called nesting. So the designation in question has a range of four point five units an acre to fifteen units an acre. It's a pretty wide range. Used to be that that was okay to do. And then what you would then do is you would fill in zoning, that as long as your zoning was somewhere within that four point five to fifteen, you were fine. It was perfectly legal. But then someone sued and and won that essentially because the general plan is the constitution and the guiding document of the city, that cities need to allow the maximum amount of development in the land use designation. And so there are a lot of areas of the city that are zoned for four and a half to fifteen units an acre. And, you know, on a, on a, you know, ten thousand square foot lot, of which there are many, you know, in the city, you know, you can then, you can then build four units. And so, you know, to us, that was a little bit of a concern, and and we've seen, we've seen this happen that that because of nesting developers and because of the nesting was allowed and now it's not, that there are lots of general plans that need to be updated in order to stop, you know, in order to make sure that the vision that the city has is met.
And we can stop, stop, I limit that, I guess, is a better terminology, by virtue of doing this plan update in the way you've indicated?
Yes, but I, you know, I love that your detailed questions here. So yes, but because then you have SB three thirty, which comes in and says you can't reduce the total development capacity in the city. So I'm just gonna use, I'm gonna just throw out a number just for simplicity's sake. If you have five thousand units of excess capacity in an area where you want to downzone it, you want to change the designation, you need to take that five thousand units and put it elsewhere in the city. You need to put that capacity, the ability to develop that. Doesn't mean it's going to be developed, but you need to be able to move that over. And so what our thinking was is that we have the this issue in the residential neighborhoods because people want to protect them, and they don't want four unit buildings built in. And then we also have the desire for people to have some more multifamily residential and some mixed use areas and very limited amount of the city. So we combine those two together, and that's the philosophy behind the alternatives.
Okay, all right, thank you. Again, I have a ton more questions, but I know we have a lot of other commissioners and a lot of people in the public. So I'll, I'll save mine for later. Thank you.
Thanks.
Commissioner McMahon, I saw you raise your hand. Please go ahead. Commissioner McMahon, if you can unmute yourself.
I'm so sorry. I had one comment based on the previous conversation because if you think about it theoretically, it seems not real that somebody would plot a fourplex in the middle of a bunch of single-family homes. But if you remember the Thomas fire in Ventura, there were the cul-de-sacs, and I know of a few where there were three homes in a normal, single-family residential cul-de-sac where they burned to the ground. And then there were other homes that were that were not. And so it's, if there, if it, if we don't make those changes, those homes that were burned to the ground, they could be replaced with fourplexes right in the middle of a kind of regular, single-family residential area. So it doesn't seem as remote and theoretical as it might have once been before the Thomas fire. That's all.
Copy that. Any other commissioners have any questions for Steph? Commissioner Newman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Mr. Ramey, for your report. Very thorough, appreciate it. I want to apologize in advance. I've got a lot of questions. Mr. Chair, if you want to jump in at some point and do half-half.
I was gonna say, I've I've got a large number of questions myself. If you want to do like, you know, keep it to like three to five, and then we'll go back and do some more.
On my count, I've got, depending on how I count, twelve or thirteen questions. So how about if I go through about half of them and then pass it back? And then I can pick up the the remainder later?
Yeah, I would go for a half. You know, if they're, if they fit a specific kind of leading direction, that would work great, too.
Great. Well, first, first, I want to reference a letter that the commissioners received late this afternoon alleging some shenanigans with the survey. Someone wrote in to note that a disproportionate number of responses came from Rancho Canejo, something like eleven hundred responses. And of those, eight hundred fifty used many examples of the same phrases multiple times. And the the letter is specific about different phrases that were used. And I wanted to give you a chance to respond to that.
Well, certainly eleven hundred didn't come from Rancho Canejo because only thirty-five percent came from that zip code. So, you know, I haven't seen that letter. You know, we are, like I said, these are the preliminary, the preliminary numbers. We are looking at if there were shenanigans. We don't think there was anything significant based on our our initial assessment of it. It's it's really common when people do campaigns for either for something or against something for someone to send out an email and tell all of their friends what to say, and that happens in surveys. We see that all the time. So the fact that there were, and we did see, you know, lots of comments, you know, yes or no. I saw like flyers and emails for things, things people didn't like and did like. So, you know, whether there were shenanigans or whether there were emails that were sent out that people then used as part of their response, I don't know. And, you know, we have to rely on our survey tool. And this is a guide. You know, I think when you get eleven, you get twenty-one hundred plus responses, that's a huge number of responses any way you cut it, and there are a lot of individual ones. So, you know, we're gonna actually, you know, look at the numbers and 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 look at where where we think there could be issues. We use Survey Monkey, which allows, essentially allows you only to pick one survey at a time. And it tracks, you know, it it tracks IP addresses. So we're gonna be able to go back and look at that.
Okay, I mean, I'm I'm a former network engineer, and I'm speaking to you from a machine that looks to the outside world like about ten or twelve individual IP addresses. So I hope, I hope there aren't, there isn't anything wrong. If there is, I also hope that you'll come back and report any substantive changes. As a result, there were cases documented where where the same language is repeated over and over. And that, I'm not, I don't know that it's necessarily a red flag, but it it does raise the question.
Yeah, and we saw those too when we were looking into them. And, you know, for us, it's really, it's really important that the survey has validity. Again, it's not statistically valid, but we certainly don't want it undermined. So our, you know, our approach is probably to go back and do some sensitivity analysis and say, well, if you, if there's similar IP addresses or lots at a similar time or whatever, we kind of pull those out and then rerun the numbers and see what it does. You know, I think if it's different, different times and different IP addresses with, you know, similar responses, it's a lot harder for us to say that it actually was not different people who were guided in the process in the email or letter campaign.
Okay, yeah, if there is, if there is a change
Absolutely.
as a result of the vetting, and I understand all surveys need commuting. If 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 that does change the results substantively, I hope we can hear about that.
We absolutely will tell you if it changes the direction.
The next set of questions I have has to do with what we are required to do, either by current policy or current law versus what's more aspirational, what what we'd like to change our policy to be. So just as a baseline to understand what we needed, what we have to do versus what we'd like to do. Number one, my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong here, is that as as we heard from Mr. Holt in our previous presentation, Reno requires us to allocate twenty-six hundred twenty-one unit housing, housing units by twenty twenty-nine. Is that correct?
Yeah, it'll, it requires that you allocate the space for that number of housing units that allows them through their requirements to be built by twenty twenty-nine, twenty twenty-nine. So that's eight years.
Okay, and there, I understand also after twenty twenty-nine will be another arena cycle and then another one after that. But just for purposes of where we are right now today in twenty twenty-one, is there any legal or policy requirement that requires us to add more than twenty-six hundred twenty-one units as of today?
Well, we're not adding any units at all. The question is, where are they? And what's the the capacity? So we're not adding, because of measure E, we're not adding a single unit of capacity to the general plan.
Or I'm sorry, I misspoke, poor wording on my part. Same question, but are we required to add or to allocate rather?
You you are not, so you need to maintain capacity and you need to provide the the space for the the twenty-six, twenty-one units as part of this, as part of this update. So that's what you're required to do. You know, I I would also say, you know, this is, this is a long process. It takes a lot of time from the community. And, you know, there's also, it's twenty-six, twenty-one, and then there's also the buffer that needs to be built into that, right? And so it's, so it's not just that, but and that is for eight years.
Right, right, but what what I'm getting at here is there is, on the one hand, this current requirement. We we must allocate twenty-six, twenty-one units by twenty twenty-nine on the one hand. And on the other hand, we have this much longer term, much more general update to the general plan where potentially we may be adding thousands, maybe tens of thousands of additional housing units, but that's not a legal requirement. It's it's a policy.
Again, it's not a legal requirement, but you're not adding any housing units. You're you're you're, you are, you are changing where in the city they are allowed to be built.
Right, right, but it, what I'm getting at is the allocation of a much larger number in twenty twenty-one, that's a policy thing fundamentally, it's not a legal thing, right?
I'm sorry, I must be misunderstanding again because there there, you need to identify parcels at the requirements for the the twenty-six, twenty-one. But the total capacity, the allocation of growth in the city remains the same at eighty-one thousand one hundred and twenty-four. You cannot reallocate.
I'm abusing, I I'm apologize for abusing the terminology. But what I'm, what I'm getting at is about allocation. We're not, we're not adding or subtracting, and you've explained that much better than I can. Eighty-one thousand is our number. We're not changing that.
That's right.
But with regard to allocating units.
You mean where in the city they are? Sorry, I'm trying to understand your question, where in the city they are. So you can, there is no, I think I got your question now, I apologize. There is no legal requirement that you have to take a certain number from the the residential areas and put them elsewhere in the city. There's no legal requirement. Only that you do that for the housing element parcels plus the buffer. You know, plus if you want to do it for three cycles, you do it for that. It's that, but we're not updating the general plan because of the housing element alone. We're updating it for a lot of reasons.
And if I may, if I, if I may.
Go ahead, Mr. Here.
So again, it is important to, as Matt was just referring to, that this is a general plan analysis, right? This is a, the housing element is one element of this process that we've been going through. And yes, it's an important part, and yes, we've been talking about the Reno numbers and what that means. But this general plan is much more than that. It's got a, it's got to impact economic sustainability, environmental sustainability. Where do we want to keep our open space? And by going through this process of these land use alternatives, by going through the process of of looking at all these other elements and components of the general plan, what happens is you start to come up with a a plan in which you're going to place commercial in certain locations, you're going to place industrial in certain locations, you've got to place residential in certain locations. And by that process, what ends up happening is you ultimately start finding out, okay, now we know where we think the residential is going to go based on this huge process that we've gone through. And then what that does is says, okay, now that we have this allocation, we have to meet our Reno, of course. And we typically go with at least three times, if not more. Last time we did six times, what our Reno allocation requirement was to meet. And because you you do that because you know that not everything's got to be built on a certain parcel as planned. Sometimes it might be much less, and therefore with no net loss under SB three thirty, you're required to then place that somewhere else. So you have to have that buffer as we've been talking about. But for, I think it is important with your question that tonight, it's really about this general plan process. It's not just about the housing element because all those other elements come into play with with coming to a conclusion of where we're going to put residential and industrial and commercial and mixed use. All those factors come into play and all these, and and the type of uses, the type of residential, the type of. Uh, mixed use, for example, or or the style of the of the uses, et cetera. So I just wanna again let you and all the other commissioners and the public as well know that this is certainly is a. Uh, a broader process of just the housing element, but an important, I I understand that housing element's an important part, part of that as well.
I I appreciate that and and again, my my purpose in answering the question. Is to make a distinction between what is legally required right now today versus what is. A policy imperative. It it may be a very desirable policy imperative, but it's policy not law.
Right, I I think my concern with when you say what's legally required is when you look at a arena, uh, allocation requirement. What what happens is best practices say that you actually allocate more than just that number because you get stuck if you don't.
We'll get to that. I have a question about that. But I'm at a high level drawing this distinction between law and policy because they are different.
I I go ahead and I think we've established that, uh, that they're two different numbers. That the reality is is that we can't change eighty one thousand to anything different. And that the long term plan is gonna be, I mean, our current general plan lasted fifty years. There is a possibility what what we're discussing now will outlive all of us at the, on the, on this meeting right now. So, so yeah, so we we do have to kind of anticipate beyond just the immediate future. So, yeah, go ahead and proceed with your next question, sir.
Thank you. Um, SB three thirty, as Mr. Remy mentioned. Current is currently in effect and currently prohibits the city from reducing its allocation. It it's, um, the number of housing units in the city. Two questions on that. Um, one, do I understand correctly that the city or through. Its membership in the legal California cities is a party to challenging that? Is that, is that still in effect? Is it, is the city posing any kind of challenge to SB three thirty, either directly or indirectly?
Mr. Ray, would you like to answer that question?
Yeah, I I I guess I'm I'm not sure where you, what what you're. I'm not aware of that in the sense of specifically about SB three thirty. We certainly have challenges with SB three thirty. I think maybe you might be thinking that there is proposed legislation. I think it's SB eight from Mr. Skinner, I believe. In which he wants to extend the timeline of SB three thirty, which currently, um, ends in twenty twenty five to. The year twenty thirty and the city has filed an opposition letter to that. Proposed legislation, again, it's and it's imperative that you all understand this is proposed. There are never, as I mentioned earlier today, tonight, there are a number of proposed legislations about housing. And many of them are, for example, SB eight, which is to continue or extend SB three thirty to twenty thirty. And I apologize for all those numbers. Uh, but also, uh, this other, other housing focused legislation to, again. Again, for the state, this is a Housing Crisis Act of twenty nineteen. They are looking at this crisis and saying. What laws can we continue to develop and and place on the burdens of frankly of the cities and local agencies to deal with housing? Uh, whether it's homeless, whether it's ADUs, whether it's affordable housing, of course. And, um, they're continuing to evaluate the legislation. So, yes, uh, we did file an opposition to a letter for SB eight specifically to. That would extend it to twenty thirty, but as far as SB three thirty, that is the law that we have to deal with right now and. We are. And and in fact, responding by making sure that we're looking at our general plan to. Um, go through a proper process. Again, I use that word process again tonight. Um, to ensure that we have a great foundation for our positions, whether it's with the arena, meeting the arena requirements, meeting affordable housing. All those factors that we talked about earlier tonight, um, we're doing this process to kind of help us with that and and the vision, of course, is. Is a, is an incredible opportunity for all of us to to, uh, look at their general plan and and. And again, look at all these factors, not just housing, but all these factors and where do you want things to be and what type? And by doing that, then you, um, come up at the end of the day, you, one of those factors is gonna be housing and where's it gotta go?
In the event that SB eight fails and SB three thirty sunsets in twenty twenty five, which is. What the law has currently implemented standard, uh, would happen? Would the city have more flexibility, less flexibility, or about the same amount of flexibility? In terms of updating at least the housing element of the general plan?
As far as the timing of the housing element, that would be, uh, that won't change. I think. It's it's difficult to answer that question fully and and I'm not trying to avoid it. I think the problem with SB three thirty is it has many components. There's many factors to it. And my concern with with just not just SB eight, but all these other bills that are being proposed is that this, this is just one year, right? Uh, this is just one year. So when we get closer to twenty twenty five, if if SB eight doesn't pass, of course, there might be other ones, other, other efforts. There are a number of them. If you want me to go through some.
I'm I'm only asking you about SB three thirty.
I understand.
If that goes away, yeah, because I hear a lot of people complaining about outside interference and restrictions from Sacramento and so forth. And and I'm asking, I'm asking you a question. Would we be in a better position without those constraints than SB three thirty?
Can I, can I jump in on that maybe? I just apologize. Um, so with SB three thirty, SB three thirty and the housing element, it doesn't have as much to do with each other. So SB three thirty is, you know, it's about capacity and, you know, and other things. So, you know, I I think that from a housing element perspective, I don't think you would. Necessarily have any difference. The difference, I would say, is if you, um, it would allow you, if you wanted to change, to reduce the overall capacity. Um, residential capacity in the city, you'd be able to do that. However, I would be surprised personally, from my professional opinion, if the state is going to allow drastic cuts. In the amount of housing allowed in cities, given the the crisis and given the direction that they've gone. If SB three thirty may not exist in twenty twenty five, but it's really not gonna impact the current housing.
Okay, thank you. Um, moving on to terminology in the study guide. Um, I had, I had some confusion between the term theoretical buildout and. Residential capacity. At times they were used kind of interchangeably and the latter term wasn't clearly defined. And, yeah, Mr. Ramius, as you said tonight and previously, Councilmember Al Adams, he said. City Attorney Tracy Newton said, there's no way we'll ever max out these allocations. The study guide also says, when preparing a general plan, this is a quote. Quote, "The horizon year growth projections are significantly lower than full buildout." And Mr. Here just. Underlined that as well, said, you always plan with a buffer and that's seems like a sound practice. But it's hard to get a handle on what kind of growth we're talking about here. So my question in this is, what is the realistic number of housing units? What what's referred to, what Mr. Randy called growth projections? Wh- what is that realistic number that we're talking about here? And if that, if that is not yet complete, when will it be complete?
Um, so we use growth projections, um, for sequel purposes for environmental analysis. Um, is the main purpose for that. Um, so we haven't done that yet. We have to actually, and we do it, we base it on. Um, what the general plan designations are. Um, so we base it on a number of factors, which is why we haven't done it. And I understand we've had some questions about what that number is and and I understand the frustration when people are like, come on, just tell me the number. Right? So I I I understand that. Um, so.
I'm actually asking for a range and not a number. I should.
So I, you know, we can, we're gonna come back in the, in the next month or so and we can give you a range. Um, but, you know, we don't have, we don't have the actual number right now because, again. You know, if depending on what the designation is, it it has an implication on the development feasibility of a parcel. And so that, that plays into it.
The, um, agenda, the the planning commission schedule currently calls for us to. Make a recommendation to the city council on, I believe it's April twenty sixth. Will we have that range of projections, uh, before, before we're asked to vote on this?
Michael, um, I think we can get you a range with that. And again, I, again, I think it has to be a range, given the, um, you know, given where we are and because it's not final yet. But I think we can give you a range based on that and based on, um, on sort of economic and market conditions and predictions of that.
Yeah, I I just, I don't, I don't feel like I have, um. Enough clarity on what we're voting on without that range. I mean, there is a range today.
Well, yeah, I mean, you're voting, you're voting on, on vision.
Three thousand, but that's very wide.
Yeah, you're voting, you're voting on vision. I mean, ultimately, um, and and growth projections tie into that. Um, but you're voting on vision and the the projections are what we, it's not a growth management. It's an an allocation of identification of a potential amount of development to analyze environmental impact. So they're very different things. It is not growth management. So if you say that it's, I don't know, five thousand units is what is analyzed in the EIR, that is not growth management. That just means you have to redo your EIR when you get five thousand.
Okay, yeah, I'm, if if there could be some narrowing of the range, I mean, currently. Between twenty one hundred and thirty two thousand is so wide as to be not meaningful.
Un- understood. It's it's too wide there and and part of it is, we needed the survey to understand the direction that people want to go. Like, you know, Westlake, it was pretty clear. People wanted to see commercial there. If you put mixed use at thirty units an acre on ten acres, that's three hundred units that we have to identify for an allocation. Right there. So that's how we, that's why we needed this information in order to come up with a projection.
Great. Well, I appreciate your efforts to get more clarity on that. Um, Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll see back sometime. I've I've got more questions, but I think this is a good breakpoint.
Perfect. Commissioner Link, you have any questions at this time?
Uh, I do. I actually have a couple of questions. Uh, my my first one is, uh, this is kind of rhetorical, but, uh, is shenanigans a technical term? Uh, I was just curious about that. Uh, the, the next question is going to be apropos specifically to me because, uh, and I can give a little bit of background. Uh, I'm a registered civil engineer, registered traffic engineer, so traffic is real big with me. So I'm curious, uh, and as far as I know, and correct me if I'm wrong, there was no traffic model developed as part of this process. And why wasn't that?
We have a traffic model that is based on the VCTC model that is developed and ready to run. The, um, the modeling effort as part of, um, once we have the numbers, the growth projections that, um, Mr. Newman was just asking about.
Okay, so really the question I'm or looking to answer is, uh, it probably would be helpful, especially at this meeting. For this commission to assess what the impacts are to the circulation system. Of course, this leads into the circ element. But whether we could have those traffic levels and even level of service and and I can get over to BMT in a minute, but. Uh, having that information presented to us so that we can understand what the ramifications are of each alternative and even when we get to the next meeting. Uh, what the, i- i- if there are going to be some changes to each alternative, what those projections could be. Now, and and I, having gone through this process myself in Simi Valley, uh, SB seven forty three does not preclude the use of level of service. Uh, when assessing impacts to circulation. So, uh, I think that would have been helpful and I guess it's more of a comment. But that would have been helpful as part of this process to have that information in front of us when we, we are hopefully going to be making a a recommendation to council.
Um, yeah, I I unfortunately don't think we're going to have a, the traffic model run by then because we're not gonna have the growth projections. Cause the preferred alternative is only gonna be developed a few weeks in advance of that. So it will, we'll have to come back and look at that and and I will say that the recommendation, um, to council. Is for the preferred alternative and that, you know, if there are issues with that, that we can, you know, because of transportation. We can come back and look at some of the, um, a- a- some of the implications of that later on to make sure that they're mitigated.
Okay. Uh, and then my last question is actually for Chair Bus. So I don't know if we can entertain a, a break here. In between or before public comment?
Uh, is everybody agreeable to taking a five minute break? Or actually, let's make it a seven minute break till eight thirty. Is that okay with everybody? And I would like to go ahead and call it. Uh, we will take a seven minute break and reconvene at, uh, eight thirty. A couple of questions before we go to public comment, too. Um, actually, I have a lot of questions, uh, much like Commissioner Newman, but I'm gonna stick to, um, um, technical related ones regarding your survey methods, if that's okay, Mr. Ramey. Uh, number one, did you use any direct mail or, um, anything of that ilk to neighborhoods within the city of Thousand Oaks?
Uh, paper mail, no. We did, um, we called and did emails.
Okay. Um, you said that you did use, uh, social, uh, where'd you get your email database?
Um, we built our database for this project over, um, the past year and a half, two years.
Did you use it by collecting from people that you were reaching out to?
Correct. And, um, Kristen, feel free to jump in on the engagement, uh, and and Tabitha, since, um, Kristen did a lot of, uh, engagement work.
All right. Uh, my other question would be, um, you said that you had social media presences. Um, do you know what your unique, um, engagement was as far as those social media outlets?
Kristen?
Um, in addition to that, I actually want to say, one of the unique things is that we received a lot of engagement to the general plan to twenty forty-five website. We received about eight thousand unique visitors from January first until March fifteenth. Um, that's the most amount of engagement that we've had on the website since this one was, um, posted about a year and a half ago. Um, other than that, we have done Instagram posts, Twitter, and there are some posts on the city's Facebook account.
Okay. Okay, so it was limited to people who follow the city's, um, social media sites?
We actually have our own general plan, Instagram account, Twitter account, and we also have a TikTok page. That that one, though, is for, the city has a TikTok page, so we have, um, posted our videos on it, on the TikTok.
We're not dancing.
Do we have any, uh, engagement data as far as those, uh, social media sites go? I'm just curious because I want to get an idea. I know, uh, my my understanding is there's less than one percent of the city answered this survey. I'm trying to figure out how hard we actually tried to reach the other ninety-nine percent of the population. Even if we discard, uh, twenty-five percent of them as being under eighteen, um, we still are, we still missed a big chunk of people.
Sure. I'll say one thing. I did send emails to all of the homeowners associations within the entire city, including those in the county that are within the city sphere. I only received four responses from homeowners associations. We specifically asked them to give them information or asked them to do a presentation for the homeowners associations during the time. Um, so we tried to do that as well. Um, we put half-page ads into the Acorn Weekly and also into the BC Star. Uh, we do maintain a general plan email subscriber list that has about thirteen hundred and sixty people on it right now. Um, and we're just trying to continue to do more and more outreach and hope that people tell their friends, families, and neighbors and, um, but but yeah.
And I I can I just point out two things with this. So one is, um, this is a pretty large number of people to spend the time to take this survey. I believe there were lots more people who didn't take the survey. It took time to go and read the alternatives and understand them. Um, you know, the other
Leads into a follow-up question I've got, Mr. Ramey.
Yeah, the other is that there's six hundred and seventy people, um, did the statistically valid survey, um, last year. So we got, we got three times that amount of folks.
Yeah, okay, my my first question would be to you, um, as far as, um, as far as, uh, the survey itself, uh, how, uh, did you determine, um, that you didn't have duplicate surveys? How'd you how'd you parse that data?
Um, like I said, we we just, these are the raw results that we're presenting right now. And we have, um, Survey Monkey allows us to not, um, to say so that you can't take the survey twice. Um, so, you know, I think if you, you know, if one wanted to take
As we're all clear, I I'm a computer science major by by, uh, by education. And I'm familiar with, uh, and I worked in automotive service for twenty years. Um, our entire industry is based on surveys. And, uh, a lot of, uh, the work that goes into those surveys revolves around eliminating gaming them. So that that's why I'm curious, what 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 efforts do you guys put in? What have you, so this is just raw data. You haven't parsed the data, you have checked it for for duplicates. You haven't checked for for ISP spoofing. We actually don't even know if ninety percent of the respondents were residents. That's relied upon by self-reporting, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so the survey information is as useful as 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 we we decided is, I guess, at this point without
It 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 does, it does mirror a lot of what we heard throughout the process.
Okay, but you've heard from the same thirteen hundred people throughout the process is what I'm understanding at this point.
We've heard from thousands of people throughout the process.
How many different people have you heard from at this point?
I I we haven't counted. We don't know.
We don't have to count.
Nope.
So you're telling me that 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 you've heard from thousands of people, but you have not verified the individual number of people you've talked to. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's kind of difficult when you do a pop-up workshop and people come for five minutes. So, yeah, that's correct.
That's, and that's what I'm saying, is is you may be seeing the same people over and over again.
Uh, well, to 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 a certain degree, yeah, I mean, there were people who, some people who came to three of the four open houses that we had on this. That's not a vote. It was just people coming and giving their input.
No, no, I understand.
We we certainly, I mean, we, you know, we want, we want the same people coming throughout the process because it's complicated. So that's actually a good thing to keep coming.
Gotcha. The other question I'd have is, uh, relative to other cities that you've done this work with, would you say that our engagement is higher or lower as far as diversity of the, uh, of the, uh, of the engagement you've gotten?
Um, diverse, you mean for the survey or overall?
Oh, uh, please, open-ended. You can tell me both.
Okay, um, I I think the engagement's actually been, um, uh, pretty significant for this. The, um, you know, the combination of our staff and the city staff, um, has done a lot of outreach, um, for the process. Um, there's, you know, there's been mailings to every resident of the city. There's been, uh, two years, a year and a half um, of newspaper articles. We've had lots of events going on.
Did you say that there was mailing to every resident in the city?
That's correct.
So you did, so you have that, uh, sent out mail?
Not for the survey.
Okay, but for, uh, okay, just to know about the process. Okay, good to know.
Yeah, yeah, we do. I I had mentioned that in the presentation. I'm sorry if I went quickly. We did at the beginning of the process, we did announcements in the utility bills, um, because we wanted everyone to know about the process at the beginning. So the this, the, um, engagement has been pretty high for the city. It is not uncommon for a survey like this to get one percent of the population. Um, it's actually maybe more than that, two percent, um, one and a half percent. So, you know, that's actually really good for a survey like this and for a general plan.
Awesome. That I I appreciate hearing that.
Yeah, um, you know, it's, you know, and I'll tell you, you know, personally, we always, um, we are always challenged by, you know, looking at it two different ways. You know, one is, hey, twenty-one hundred people spent a lot of time, um, going through the survey and coming up with answers. It took time to do that, and that's all, that's a lot of people, and it's three times what the statistically valid survey had for numbers. And at the same time, we share your your feeling of like, God, we wish we could have fifty percent of the population take this. Um, but we never, ever, ever get to that level of participation. Yeah, this is, this is pretty hot. Like, usually, our surveys are eight to nine hundred people.
Okay, so in in, you know, relative, it's it's typically less than one percent than I'm I'm imagining.
Yeah, yeah, definitely.
Okay, yeah, because I'm 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 listening to staff, and obviously, they worked really, really hard to get out, uh, get out the response. So I appreciate hearing that that was effective, that they've they've done a great job. Um, I will, uh, leave it off with, uh, I saw my daughter in the presentation, and that was very exciting yet again. She's the little girl in the, uh, supergirl outfit in one of your first slides. So so thanks for putting that in there, and I give a little shout out to Tristan. How you doing? Um, I will now move on to, uh, public comments at this point. Um, so we will now go to public comments. We have, one, two, three, four, five, I believe it is, eight speakers, if I'm counting correctly. Uh, each speaker will have three minutes, uh, and, um, we will start with uh, Karen Wilburn of Newberry Park, if you're available. Um, Karen, if you can, uh, just state your name and, uh, your city of residence for, uh, for ratification, and you may proceed.
I am available, and I guess I have to cut down my little spiel here. Uh, Karen Wilburn, I'm a resident of Newberry Park. Results of the survey were posted on March twenty-fourth. The survey was designed so that it should only be taken once per computer. It appears to me as if someone managed to circumvent this and create what I can only term as ballot box stuffing. The survey permitted free-form comments for each four major areas of change. Rancho Cano had an unusually high number of comments, eleven hundred and thirty-seven, when compared to each of the other three areas. In fact, it almost equaled the total of the other three areas of change, and most of them dealt with supporting development of the thirty-six-acre Newberry Park lot at the end of Alice, often called the Wetlands. There were seventy-nine pages of comments in response to question nine. At least eight hundred and fifty, or seventy-five percent of these comments, used similar words or phrases. Words and phrases such as police, police force, workforce, students, firefighters, firemen, teachers. I live in Newberry Park. I live in Thousand Oaks. I am a resident, and forty-acre opportunity appeared eight hundred and thirty-nine times. Eight hundred and sixteen of these words or phrases were in response to the free-form question nine for the Rancho Cano area. The phrase "orchard opportunity" appeared a hundred and fourteen times in the results and only in response to question nine. A further breakdown is "orchard opportunity project" forty-four times, "orchard opportunity property" thirty-three times, and "orchard opportunity site" thirty-two times. Yet this phrase isn't anywhere in the briefing book. Last month, the owner of this property left a letter in the mailboxes throughout my neighborhood. The letter used the term "orchard village," "opportunity site." Is this a coincidence? Trust me, very few people who live in Newberry Park want to see that lot develop beyond its current zoning. I also find it interesting that there are no comments in any of the other areas of change that specifically mention housing for firemen, police, teachers, students, or government workers. It's very clear to me that a campaign has been waged to make it appear as if there is support in the community for development of this lot, which there just is not. This survey was indic- was intended as a vehicle for public feedback on the new general plan, not a voice for a private interest group to stack the deck for their own personal gain. Since the survey answers were anonymous and only asked for a zip code, I also wonder how many of these survey responses came from people outside of our community in support of special interests on this lot. Frankly, this perceived manipulation of the results undermines the credibility of the survey results for the entire Rancho Cano area. Maybe the next survey should require some type of registration to make sure the survey is only being answered by local business owners and community members. I respectfully ask the Planning Commission and City Council to consider these issues. Thank you.
I appreciate your time, Karen. Thank you. Um, our next comment will be coming from Gordon Clint. Uh, if you're available, sir, please, you have the floor. Gordon, you might be muted. Is Gordon muted of his own accord, or are, can we, uh, can we free him up?
He's muted on his own.
Okay. Gordon, just so you know, we cannot hear you.
We don't have a mute
I don't have a mute button.
There we go. We got you freed up, sir.
Oh, good. Yeah, I'm not sure how this works. Uh, I don't see a camera on, so this is just, uh, verbal, is that right?
Yeah, we can hear you, so you've got three minutes, sir.
Okay. Well, good evening, Commissioners. My name is Gordon Clint. My family moved to Newberry Park before Thousand Oaks, uh, was even a city. But my wife and I have lived here in our Newberry Park home for about twenty-five, over, over twenty years. Um, we've been following the development of the general plan update. We read the briefing book, and we took the survey. I personally have no strong position on development of the Rancho Cano area at this time. But after reading the survey results for that area, I concluded that the entire survey is unreliable and should be thrown out or not given too much consideration. The survey showed that, uh, thirteen hundred and eighty-seven people made written responses to question number nine about Rancho Cano. While the other three areas of our city added together only, um, uh, they they only received eleven hundred and sixty-four comments added together for the other three parts of the city. So it's way out of, out of balance. And the, uh, seems to me that the other parts of the city would would, uh, take much more interest and get more comments. And, uh, those comments that were listed, uh, took up seventy-nine pages in that briefing, uh, briefing book, uh, on, of the survey, I should say. Uh, and going through that survey, um, most of those, um, comments seemed fishy to me. They were, a- as he, as somebody else already said, they were very repetitive with similar phrases, often referring to this opportunity project or opportunity property. So I asked, "Opportunity for whom?" I expected a a strong, strong response from the organized neighbors who've been speaking out against the development um, of the so-called Wetlands acreage just south of the, the, um, one oh one and, you know, along the one oh one. But surprised, I was surprised anyhow. Uh, the question number seven survey chart showed that fourteen hundred and ninety-four people, or seventy-four percent, want up to four stories and forty-five units per acre. Now, I, that's not what I heard from the number of the neighbors that's that, uh, I've heard speaking about this. So I wasn't born yesterday. The survey was obviously manipulated to produce the results that someone wanted. So anyhow, that's my comments for today. Worth. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, uh, our next speaker is Jackson Piper. Jackson Piper, if, uh, you're there, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you, Commissioners and, uh, community members who are watching. My name is Jackson Piper. I live in unincorporated Newberry Park, um, spent a lot of time in Thousand Oaks, and I've been following along with this process pretty much since the beginning, and I'm pretty happy with the results so far. I do have to agree with, uh, what, uh, Gordon Clint and the previous caller, uh, mentioned. It does seem like there's a big discrepancy in the numbers for the Rancho Cano area that, uh, unfortunately seems to throw the reliability of the survey, at least for that area, off. I would actually like to see a lot of new development in the Rancho Cano area, not necessarily at the Wetlands, but uh, again, I'm not opposed to it if it's done tactfully in a way that respects the fact that there is a decent amount of flooding and, uh, wildlife activity that happens there. So I would encourage, uh, the city and the consultant to try to go back and and extricate the, uh, comments that are not uh, entirely trustworthy about the Rancho Cano area. Um, my main set of comments that I want to make is that, um, even though I know a lot of people who wrote into the survey are not happy with the idea of change in Thousand Oaks and with the development along the Boulevard, um, it unfortunately, uh, depending on your perspective, uh, sometimes unfortunately has to happen because we've spent decades underdeveloping, uh, throughout California. We now have millions of housing units that are missing, uh, that are causing all sorts of problems in terms of affordability and homelessness. I've gone over this before in other meetings, but basically, Thousand Oaks needs to pull its weight as to all the other cities in California um, to get us out of this massive hole we've dug ourselves into. That doesn't mean everywhere has to change, but we need to have some change throughout this, the certain parts of the city to accommodate new residents and help, uh, people who work here, live here, and people who who want to live here, who might already be working here to be able to afford to live here. Uh, traffic and, uh, quality of life issues really shouldn't be a considering factor because there are ways to build, uh, even at high density and and higher, um, height limits, that are not going to affect quality of life. And if you mode shift to more efficient modes of travel than the car, which takes up a huge amount of road space, you can easily accommodate large volumes of other traffic to move freely. Thank you for your time. Please vote wisely.
Thank you very much, Mr. Piper. All right, we're going to move on to Roseanne Witt. Roseanne, if you are available, you have the floor. Thank you. Roseanne, there you are.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Ms. Witt, we can hear you.
My name is Roseanne, and I live in Thousand Oaks. I strongly urge every city resident to actually read the comments in the land use briefing book and survey for yourself. I read all of them. For an open-ended question seeking other comments about an entire area of change, I counted over 800 about one single parcel. Almost all were some variation of, I live in, or I am a resident of, fill in the blank. I am for development of the 40 acre opportunity parcel, who talks like that, or the 37 acre vacant lot. And I support, fill in the blank, with mixed use, workforce housing, or affordable housing for, fill in the blank, with government workers, teachers, students, firemen, or police. Our survey was hacked. Surveys that rely on voluntary participation have baked in credibility issues because the results depend on which population sectors or individuals have the resources or incentive to respond. One conspicuously scammed question means none of the survey results can be trusted. Someone obviously went to considerable effort to game question nine. So why stop there? Especially since seizing that opportunity to also distort all the multiple choice questions with their preferred answers would be far harder to detect. That scenario could explain why many of the survey results were so shocking, like why results of the multiple choice questions are often not consistent with answers in the free form sections, and why the multiple choice results suggest residents do support high mixed-use density downtown on T.O. Boulevard, but don't support it at all near the Janz or Oaks malls, which have the space to easily accommodate a mix of commercial revitalization and housing, or in the Village Centers, where all three could provide local businesses hard hit by the pandemic and online shopping with the built-in customer base needed to get back on their feet, while simultaneously offering many more T.O. residents easy access to all of our routine working, grocery, banking, shopping, dining, and entertainment needs within walking distance of home. If state-required housing isn't built near existing and increasingly vacant commercial space, where is left? Only T.O. Boulevard, and who stands to profit most from that? Both the evidently fraudulent survey responses and the equally predictable outcome that must result throw heavy suspicion on the validity of the entire survey, which can no longer be trusted to direct the course of our community's general plan update. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Witt. Excellent timing, three minutes even. Our next speaker is Mary Ann Van Zyle. Mary Ann Van Zyle, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Chairman Buss, that's nice to say, and other Commissioners, for giving me the opportunity to speak about the land use alternatives. I was going to talk about the real need for housing that we have in the city of Thousand Oaks, and because we need it to support our businesses, our school age population is dwindling, we just need more housing, and we need more affordable housing.
Ms. Van Zyle, I believe we've lost our audio on you.
Okay, so I took, I just sometimes take a little pause because I'm speaking off the cuff now. I took the survey. I worked with a bunch of people, not to feed them answers, but because we have an idea that more housing in the city of Thousand Oaks is going to make this a more livable place. We're so excited by the ideas of the Village Centers, where we might have local neighborhood areas that can reduce the need for cars, at least for those weekend trips, that can increase walkability in neighborhoods, can increase bikeability, that if we really work to build affordable housing in the city, and it's not going to be easy, that we can bring a diversity to our neighborhoods that we don't have right now. And I'm so excited about the possibilities that are available to the city in this new general plan amendment. The first part, though, is getting density on the ground in the land use plan. So I encourage you to do what we elected your appointors to do, which is to make decisions on the basis of your judgment. I mean, it would be nice to have a valid survey, but we aren't taking a vote. It's going to rely on political will and for you all to make a judgment about what is best for the city as a whole. To develop affordable housing, we're going to have to be really creative with an inclusive housing ordinance that perhaps requires more, a higher percentage of affordability in more dense areas, or denser developments, so that we really can bring in the affordable units, working better with nonprofits, working to develop a community housing trust, working with tax incentives, and working with perhaps reduced developer fees to encourage the development of affordable housing that I believe this city needs because our teachers can't live here. So I said teachers in the survey, and no one told me to. Anyway, that's it for me. Thank you.
Appreciate your time, Ms. Van Zyle. Our next speaker is Lisa Powell. Lisa Powell, if you're there, you have the floor. Ms. Powell?
Oh, hi. I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Please, proceed.
Okay, turn my camera on. Hi, everybody. I'm Lisa Powell, and I've lived in Thousand Oaks for 16 years. And I wanted to take this opportunity to voice my enthusiasm for the opportunity the city now has to plan for its future with the general plan update process. We know that to be a vibrant, livable, and sustainable community, we need more housing, especially affordable housing. We know we need more housing, not only because of the extreme shortfall of housing in our state as a whole, but because of the decline of our local economy here in recent years, in large part attributed to the shortage of housing that's affordable. Nearly 70% of the Thousand Oaks workforce drives in, largely because they can't afford to live here. And there are many reasons why we should want more folks who can both live and work here and not have to commute. The land use map alternatives provide some promising ideas for where we can build more housing, including mixed use. In areas like the T.O. Mall and Janz Marketplace, we know we have too much retail space in the city that we won't be used. There are several areas along Thousand Oaks Boulevard that have been suggested as well. I think it makes sense to disperse some of the density throughout the city rather than just on the Boulevard. Let's offer options for all different income levels and ages and abilities. I love the Village Center concept, which would revitalize some retail areas that are aging by adding mixed use. I'm sure there are many who would appreciate being able to walk to a place like Stone House for a glass of wine rather than having to drive to the Boulevard. I'm very conscious that there are some in our community who will fight progress and change, and I hope that they'll understand that the proposed land use changes won't result in anything we'll actually see for a while. This is long-term planning. And any ultimate changes affect only a small part of the city's available land. Open space remains untouched. The vistas will remain for all to enjoy. When we think about mixed use and some additional taller buildings, they can be beautiful and cherished structures that add housing, architectural style, and beautiful community spaces. Providing more housing is imperative, especially housing that's affordable. And I hope that the Planning Commission will play a key role in developing innovative ways to do that rather than just putting a checkmark in a box or reacting to potential state control. Let's use the local control we have now. There are ways to be intentional and thoughtful in how we shape the future of Thousand Oaks, a beautiful, safe, and livable city that is also equitable, inclusive, and diverse. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bell. All right, our next speaker is going to be Clint Foltz. Clint, if you could just state your name and your city of residence. I don't see it on my paperwork. You have the floor.
Good evening. My name is Clint, and I'm a renter here in Thousand Oaks. I'm also a founding member of the Cano Climate Coalition. I would like to address the general plan update land use alternative survey results. I attended the last G-PAC meeting, and I, along with most others, were surprised by the survey results. The results didn't seem to line up with the majority of comments that were found in the survey and repeatedly expressed in letters to the editor and local newspapers and at city council meetings. The results seemed skewed specifically in the Rancho Cano area and the western portion of the Thousand Oaks Boulevard. I would hope that the general plan update would reflect the will of the people, the citizens of Thousand Oaks. I've heard that the community and G-PAC members would like to see neighborhood town squares or village centers that would reduce car traffic and make neighborhoods more walkable. Areas like the Janz Marketplace, the Oaks Mall, and the Village Centers are perfect opportunities to take advantage of a dying commercial real estate. It would increase walkability and reduce emissions, and it can spread housing and traffic congestion throughout the city rather than just the main arteries such as Thousand Oaks Boulevard. As a community, we need to come together in a sustainable and environmentally friendly way as we head into the future. We cannot escape the reality of droughts, wildfires, and extreme weather events, but we can prepare for emergencies and become more resilient together as a city. Thank you.
Clint, thank you very much. Our next speaker is Sean Meradian. Sean, if you could just state your city of residence, you have the floor, sir. Sean?
Oh.
There you are.
Good evening, Commissioner Buss, Commissioned Members. Sean Meradian, I am a lifelong resident of Thousand Oaks and the proud president of the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Association, which wanted to commend staff on this incredible amount of work that's been put into the general plan update. Our association was given the presentation by the GP team, participated in several of the pop-ups, was asked to do outreach to our members. We sent out over 300 letters multiple times to all of our property owners and asked them to participate and give input. We also spoke to our tenants and other stakeholders, and a lot of which are residents of Thousand Oaks. So we are highly encouraged by the activity and the results that we have received thus far. The major takeaway that we found is that people want flexibility. I've been involved in the specific plan since inception in 2011, and to some of the Commissioners' questions, we have barely touched 170 units in 10 years, of which, you know, just one of them is being occupied, which is the 1710 project. So moving forward in the general plan concept, looking at the next 20, 30 years, our city definitely needs flexibility. Now, flexibility doesn't just necessarily equate to additional housing units. It also brings you incredible places like Tranchilla Hill Brewery. If it wasn't for the specific plan and its amendments, that brewery would never come to fruition. And so I caution everyone that when we think long-term, all we think that I think we gathered from our outreach is that the community wants flexibility. And if we really want to create a placemaking, preserve open space, trees, neighborhoods, and be inclusive, as we've spoken a lot about through last year's pandemic and all the other outreach, this general plan is a great opportunity for that. And we wholeheartedly support it, and we thank the city and staff for all the great work they've done.
Thank you very much, Mr. Meradian.
Thank you, sir.
All right, our next speaker is, our last speaker, actually, last but not least, Wendy Zimmerman. I just got you on, so I don't have your city of residence either. If you'll state that, you have the floor. Wendy, are you with us?
Yes, I just got there. I just got my permission to speak. Thank you. I want to, I do agree very much over question number nine, what has been counted. So in adding to the discussion, I would like to talk to you about question number seven. Question number seven regarding Rancho Cano says that in the general plan, mixed use has four stories and 45 units per acre. In Rancho Cano, are you okay with that if it reduces the amount of housing that is needed elsewhere in the city? Well, of course, everybody but those of us in that area is going to say, great, put all the housing over in Newbury Park in the Rancho Cano area of change, and we don't have to share the burden of affordable housing. That statement absolutely reeks of segregation, discrimination, and many things which were outlawed. And you can find the case law that says you can't do that because it deprives people of opportunities and mingling with people of different incomes and different races and different means from you, and sticks them all and basically turns Rancho Cano into a ghetto. I actually really hate all the areas of change and the way that it creates a ghetto along the 101 freeway and leaves everybody else untouched that lives further off. I believe affordable housing and any new housing should be equitably distributed throughout the city of Thousand Oaks. It would be much healthier for our society and get us out of this bias against people who have less money than we do. It doesn't matter what color your skin is as much as is your wallet fat enough to live here. And it's really ridiculous, and it is putting a very nimby attitude out towards that of Newbury Park. We do need to be careful about how we build and throughout the entire Cano Valley, and this starts from Calabasas all the way out through Agora and Westlake Village. And out here, we have had a long-standing policy of no more than three stories. There have been many fights about the three stories, and we need to keep it. We need to be contiguous, and we need to maintain our views throughout the Cano Valley. The other thing is, I live two blocks from an apartment building that is 35 units and two stories, and the amount of trash that apartment building dumps on the residences that are near it is ridiculous. It looks like a trash heap. There are liquor bottles, fast food wrappers constantly building up, and they are not picked up. They are not caused by the people who live on the other side of the street. They are caused by the people who visit or live there. Your structures don't incorporate adequate parking for people who visit apartment buildings. These people will have extra trucks. Casa Cano has many people who have businesses out of their house with vans that service their business in addition to their personal cars. It is very inadequate planning. And if you talk to the people of this area, you will find we are not happy campers, and our area is poorly defined. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zimmerman. All right, that is all of our public speakers. So we are going to return back to staff and Mr. Ramey for any follow-up they have for us.
I don't have, are you looking for responses to the public comments, or?
If you can do whatever you'd like with this time, sir.
I am, you know, I guess what I'd like to do is just pretty much thank the, I was really impressed with the members of the community who came out. I think that what we need, what the community, what we've heard that they need is dialogue and discussion about these issues. They're really, they're tough issues. We know that when we talk about development. And so, you know, when we use, when we talk about density, when we talk about development in the city, it, you know, it brings things out in people. And so I think that it's great to actually have the comments and the discussion about this. There were certainly comments on the questions about throwing out the entire survey. I want to say that we intentionally did a non-statistically valid survey for this because we wanted to give everyone the opportunity to participate in their comments. Had we done a statistically valid survey, we wouldn't be able to do that. So I think it's important that, you know, we know it's not statistically valid, but we did get a lot of people to participate in the survey. We'll go back and we're going to look at it for any redundancies that we see, and we'll come back to you with that information. But we do feel like we got a significant number of people to participate, and some of the comments that were, many of the comments that were identified in the survey are consistent with what we've heard throughout the process. So, you know, we felt like when we did the statistically valid, when the statistic valid survey was done previously, it actually mirrored all of the engagement that we had done to date. So, you know, we feel relatively confident with that, with the information provided. It is one data source. One of the speakers said that, you know, ultimately, it's up to the Planning Commission to recommend and the city council to adopt. This is a data point for the community to look at. And so I would just encourage folks to look at that. There was also a comment that, about the number of people who responded and to the open-ended comments, and they were overwhelmingly negative. I'd like to just respond to that quickly. The, I'd like to just respond to that quickly, which is that the open-ended comments for the questions about preference were allowed if you had none of the above. And so if you click none of the above, it's not surprising that people, the responses are negative. They represent a small percentage overall of the total. Again, it's, you know, what we're trying to find is not specifics. We're trying to find directionality with the comments. There are clearly people who are passionate about all things, and, you know, ultimately it's going to be up to the planning commission and the council for the direction that they want to choose for the city.
Thank you very much, sir. Ms. Rice, Mr. Forbes, do you have anything to add?
All right. Nothing else to add unless you have any additional questions. Thank you.
All right, yes, I'd like to go back to my fellow commissioners. Does anybody have any additional questions? I know Mr. Newman's chomping at the bit, so I'll let you go first, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to follow up first on a question Commissioner Link asked regarding infrastructure. He was asking about traffic, his area of expertise, and in a larger sense, all kinds of infrastructure, physical plant, soft infrastructure such as schools, libraries. What is staff's sense of our current city's infrastructure, the ability of that infrastructure to support this planned growth?
That analysis is going to be done through the environmental impact report, which will look at traffic, utilities, all aspects of the city's infrastructure and resources. Water, energy, all of those different things will all be studied through the environmental impact report. The reason that we don't have the information now with the alternatives is, is because, as we've, we've pointed out, the, it's not, we're not doing a, you know, low, medium, and high growth alternatives. These all result in the same citywide residential capacity. So the type of analysis as far as, you know, ultimately water supplies and those kinds of things is going to be relatively similar among the alternatives because the capacity is ultimately the same. It's very time consuming and costly to do those types of analyses, so doing three different analyses for three different alternatives is, is, you know, frankly, just cost prohibitive and not practical to do. So the intent is that all of that analysis will be done on the preferred land use alternative once we, once we get to that point. And then if additional tweaks need to be made to the alternative later in the process as a result of what comes out of the EIR, there will still be a possibility to do that. So long as the, the changes aren't to the point that it could impact our housing inventory and impact what we're doing with the housing. But there may still be, you know, opportunities to make those changes later.
Okay, I understand. That's a good answer. Thank you. It sounds like you're saying, in a general sense, I'm not trying to pin you down on amounts or types of infrastructure, but in a general sense, would you say it's a fair statement that a substantial increase in housing capacity might also require substantial upgrading to our infrastructure?
I don't really want to say that until I see what the results of, of the environmental impact report are, you know, once we do that, that full analysis.
Okay, fair enough. Moving on, in a big picture sense, one of the big changes potentially from this vision, to use a term that was kicked around earlier, is that there, there may be a transition from our current situation where the city is predominantly or mainly single-family homeowners to one that adds thousands, potentially tens of thousands of apartment units, which I presume will be mainly renters. So two questions on that. One is, what impact would that have on real wages and the distribution of income in the city? And two, is there any evidence at all that upzoning increases housing affordability, or does it just increase land values?
I'm unclear on your first question. Can you repeat that?
First question is if we move from the situation which we have today, where most people are homeowners, to a situation where there are many thousands more apartment dwellers. And I'm not making any value judgment whatsoever on renters versus owners. I'm asking an economic question. How would the city's distribution of income, how would, how would the city's income picture change as a result?
Well, I think one of the things that we do know from what we've heard is that, and by income, do you mean income of individuals or income of the city?
I'm asking about real, real wages per household.
So one thing that we've heard throughout the process from a lot, a lot of people is that there are, there are a lot of people who work in this city who are not able to live in the city. And so what that does is that actually creates a situation where people are commuting in, and then people who live here are commuting out. And so that has impacts on the transportation system. What we've heard, and, and this is, this is a byproduct of the way the state, the direction the state has been going, and a byproduct of housing costs. It's not anything that is, you know, that the city has intended to happen. So I just want to be clear on that. So the situation that we have in the city is that housing is really expensive. And it's, you, it's, the majority of people who are working in the city are not actually able to live in the city. And so what we've heard from the process is that people want to be able to live in the city. So adding a certain amount of multifamily housing, whether it's rental or affordable, whether it's rental or ownership housing, and housing, and housing that is smaller, so apartments, multifamily housing, is going to make it so that more people can live in the city who work in the city. That will, of course, have slight modifications to the income profile. However, there's a hundred and twenty thousand plus people in the city, so it's not going to have significant changes in that profile. But sure, there will be more people who may be renters than owners if you add more rental housing. But you'll also have more people who live in the city who are able to work in the city, and that's what we've heard throughout the process, that people want, people want that.
Okay, so I heard you say two things there. One is slight modifications to the income profile, and two, not significant. So is your answer then that
We haven't done the analysis.
Thousands of apartment units will not change the income profile of the city?
You know, it will, of course, it will modify it. So if you have a thousand rental units that are low income, of course, it's going to change the income profile. But the point is, that's what people have said they need, that the city needs, is people who are able to live and work in the city. You know, I know that it was commented on in the survey of policemen and firemen and CLU professors, but those are the people who can't afford to live in the city. It's the, the people who are working in the stores and, you know, mowing the lawns and working at CLU and the nurses who can't afford housing in the city. Who are working in the city and serving the residents. And so that's what we've heard that people want. And yes, what that means is it may change the income profile. However, it doesn't necessarily mean that it impacts the fiscal resources of the city. And in fact, what we do know is that multifamily housing, new multifamily housing, actually can have a positive impact on the fiscal resources in the city. Because it is new housing, and it is housing where the value of it is more than what the, the existing maybe single-use retail would be. So while it may be multifamily, it actually may have a positive impact from the property tax, plus you have more people living in the city who are then able to spend money at the retail in the city. So my guess is it's going to be positive.
Well, that, that brings us to the second question I asked about upzoning and housing affordability. I've seen a lot of evidence in the past ten, twenty years where there has been upzoning, there has been some increase in density, and there has not been a concurrent increase in housing affordability, on the contrary. So my question is, what, what evidence is there that, that increasing density will lead to greater affordability?
Yeah, that's, that's a really good question. That's a really important one to ask. So what we do know is that the cost of construction is extremely high. It's very expensive to get projects permitted. It's very expensive to build the buildings. It's only going up. And when you get into structured parking, you're talking about sixty to seventy-five thousand dollars per parking space, just for the cost of construction of the parking space. It's extremely expensive, which is why, you know, a lot of cities, in order to increase the amount of affordability in the city, are requiring affordable housing through inclusionary zoning. So that's an option that the city can have, but the only way you're going to get to that is by allowing housing in the city. It's very difficult, very, very difficult to build standalone affordable housing projects. They're, they're extremely difficult to put together because the myriad of, of sources of funding that you need in order to make that happen, which is why you don't see that happening. What we also know, again, through the, the conversations we've had, is that people are looking for a diversity of housing types and a diversity of experiences in the city. And you can only get that by looking at more multifamily housing. And we're not talking high rises. We're talking, you know, three, four-story buildings that actually produce the same benefits for the residents of having a place to go and live and walk around. So we've heard a lot of that.
Yeah, and on that, we're a hundred percent in agreement. I mean, planners, going all the way back to Jane Jacobs, have said that housing works most successfully when all income levels are represented in the same neighborhoods.
That's right.
The final question I have is just about process. The study guide gives the term maximum heights, and I want to be very clear on this because there's been some mission creep under our current system where some of the current zoning says heights or, or things that initially started out being maximums, over time changed and became average limits rather than maximum limits. And I'm wondering if, in making these changes, if we have the potential to lock down, lock that down and codify that when we say maximum, we really mean maximum here?
Yeah, you know, I, I think, you know, you bring up a really good point, which is that what's critical is that there's clarity of outcome. Because I think that's what everybody wants, is, you know, when you agree to something, you know what you're going to get. And so, you know, I, I, I do think there is the potential, you know, following on with the, from the general plan to the zoning, to change definitions of things. So, you know, I, again, I'm going to speak for myself personally, which is that variations in building height, within reason, are more important than, than a single maximum height. Because if you do a single maximum height, you end up with one height across a whole bunch of buildings. It looks terrible. So you want some variation, but you don't want extreme variation. And so I think that the regulations can be modified in order to achieve what the community is trying to achieve, which is reservation of views, not overwhelming heights, but yet also have varied and interesting architecture.
And in general, I agree with you all about, there's a guy named Housman who built Paris at a single height, and a lot of people all over the world still envy that. But in general, I, I agree.
Very, very few have been able to emulate that in the way that it was done. So it's best practice not to do that because it's too difficult.
Yeah, yeah, he's kind of the exception, I would agree.
Yeah, if you can build Paris in part of the city, that's great. I said, if you can build Paris in part of the city and people love it and can walk around there, you know, maybe that's the answer. I think there's other ways to do it. You're, Thousand Oaks is not Paris.
Thousand Oaks is not Paris. On that, we agree.
Yes.
Different. It's wonderful in its own way.
Absolutely.
I'm sorry, I do have one more question. I think this is really better for Mr. Forbes or Mr. Holt. Earlier this week, on Tuesday, I'd asked for a breakdown of eligible lots with breakouts of location and acreage, current zoning, and maximum, current maximum are used allowed. I'm hoping that information will be available soon. Do you have any update on that?
We're working on pursuing what we have. We, the analysis that's been done in the past with, like, what was done with Measure E in two thousand and seventeen was not done on a parcel-by-parcel level. It was done more on a neighborhood level. So the, the data that you're asking for, we don't have in the exact form that you're asking for it. So we're looking to try and find, you know, what it is that we do have that can, that can address, you know, what, what we think you're looking for. Ian, did you have something to add to it?
No, not real, I mean, no, because I mean, I think the basis of your inquiry was related to Measure E and the, basically the baseline capacity that was determined back in two thousand and seventeen. And as Michael said, it was, you know, based on an area analysis. It is not parcel-based. So, you know, the capacity of the city has not been extrapolated out on a parcel-by-parcel basis. Because actually, if you do that, you run into different numbers because you're not looking at gross land use areas, and so.
What I'm looking for here is a baseline for comparison. So if, if we're, if we're looking only at general neighborhoods in the study guide, which we seem to be, then there was that information in two thousand and seventeen. I don't have all the color around what was in those neighborhoods with regard to current zoning. I understand what you're saying about any of the little parcels, but I don't, I, what I don't have is the before picture, if you will, to be able to make a good comparison with the after pictures that are being proposed.
After pictures, you mean after two thousand and seventeen?
No, I believe it was
Yeah, three options, that's right.
So your current zoning looked like, or the zoning looked like previous to two thousand and seventeen relative to the options that are available today?
You're interested in that in, within the areas of change or within the residential neighborhoods or both?
Yes, both.
Okay.
Because there are, there are with the Village Center proposal, some changes in residential neighborhoods as well.
Well, I, I would say that, I mean, the alternative, the preferred alternative is going to have to balance the capacity, you know, where you have the existing communities or neighborhoods that will be, have a land use that's calibrated to what's on the ground today, and that additional capacity is moved elsewhere. But the eighty-one thousand units that were basically received by the city council in two thousand and seventeen, that is the number that we use. So the methodology that Ramey and Associates will be using through, using their software and generating, you know, is basically taking that eighty-one thousand, and then they're going to
I second Mr. Newman's request, though. It would be interesting to see what they were looking at in two thousand and seventeen to aid us in making a decision.
It gives us a good baseline for comparison.
If it's, if it's accessible.
Yeah, I mean, I guess if, if the, is, is the question the basis for the eighty-one thousand, or is the question?
What's the distribution of the eighty-one thousand? What, what, what the distribution looks like in those areas?
Okay.
Mr. Ramey and his team have done a lot of, have gone to a lot of effort, and there's a lot of specificity in the study guide for each of the three alternatives in terms of how dense they are, how they, how they would be zoned and so on. What I don't have is a comparator. I don't have a, a starting point, and that's what I'm asking for.
Mr. Here, did you have something to add?
I'm, I was a little concerned that we're going beyond what's on the agenda as far as tonight versus a Public Records Act request or a request from Mr. Newman. So I didn't want to get lost in that shuffle of, of two different issues. One was focused on the Measure E analysis that was set in two thousand and seventeen versus the general plan update preparation for tonight. I understand there's a correlation that you're asking for. My only recommendation would be maybe to, if we need to clarify that, we clarify it with, you know, with, with understanding for staff what you want us to be looking for in preparation for the next meeting or, and two meetings from now, actually.
My, my email Tuesday, Mr. Here, was, was quite specific. I, I gave exact, I, I was quite clear in what I requested. I, I asked for lists of eligible lots showing location, acreage, current zoning, and current maximum residential units allowed. I understand from what Mr. Holmes has said that it may not, the, the information available, I, I had thought it was available from the two thousand and seventeen Measure E study. I understand that it may not be granular, so granular to be on a per parcel basis. But if, if that information is available on a per neighborhood basis or per area basis, that would be a useful starting point in comparing where we might be going with any of these alternatives. And this being a study session, I'm, I'm having a difficult time comparing where we are to where we might go without having that baseline information.
I mean, I, I understand what you're asking for, and I, I think my answer is going to be, as far as your request from Tuesday, we need to continue to look at that request to ensure that we can properly answer it, and as Mr. Holt And as Mr. um, Holt mentioned, it might not be exactly in the data that you're requesting due to how we did it in 2017. But I would also then also suggest that we look at the staff report and the information that was provided in the 2017 presentation, when we talked about eighty-one thousand units for the capacity of the city. If that makes, if that helps you.
That that information is all available online on the Measure E, on the city's website in under Planning and then Measure E. There's the presentation and the staff report.
Are you referring to the October twenty-fourth, twenty-seventeen report to the city council?
Yes, and the presentation.
Okay, that 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 report is the one to to look for.
Yeah, I think I I think what you're asking for, if you look on that Measure E page, there's the the staff report, the presentation, and then there's some additional materials that were posted there after that meeting. There's a couple of maps and um some spreadsheets that I I think it would help us if you, once you take a look at that and then let us know what additional you need and i- or if you need something different or additional than what's there, that might help us understand a little better what you're what you're looking for.
I I did look at the uh twenty-four October seventeen report and did not find any information, but I may have missed it. I will go back and look at it again, and then I'll come back um with any information that's missing from that.
Now, and I would also recommend that you look at the PowerPoint because the PowerPoint has some of that data in there.
Okay.
Perfect. Anything further, Commissioner Newman?
That's it for me, thank you.
All right, uh, fellow commissioners, anyone else have any additional questions? I'm seeing a lot of heads shaking now, so um bear with me, I've got a few questions and uh and I'll try to try to be rapid about this. I know I believe we are limited until ten o'clock, so I'll I'll do my best to get us out of here quickly. All right, um.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
You're you're not limited to ten o'clock.
Well, we're not.
No, you can you can do a motion if you want. If you think you're gonna go beyond ten o'clock, it's nine thirty-two now, you can do a request a motion from your from your uh commissioners to see.
See how long-winded I am, go from there.
Okay, just know that that's an option for you.
You got it. All right, um. The uh first question I've got, uh, I actually forgot to ask Mr. Ramey this in my my first battery of questions. On the survey, did you find that um people were more positive about um development options when you presented them with uh visual aids for the for the the questions as opposed to um the the map formats?
Uh, I don't know if I can actually answer that. I mean visually, people um.
I ju- I just saw, you know, on the on your quick presentation, I saw, you know, numbers like seventy-seven percent positive and all that, but then when 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 the maps, was there was there a greater enthusiasm, you think or no?
People generally, I mean, I I didn't look specifically for the survey. People generally respond better to pictures than they do to maps and better to pictures than they do to numbers.
That's what I was thinking, but.
People, people always look at a picture and say, oh, I love that. And you're like, hey, it's, you know, forty units an acre, and they're like, oh, I hate that. So, you know, we see that all the time with surveys, but I, you know, honestly, I haven't looked with this one about the different responses.
Okay, maybe if you can parse that as well, that would be awesome. I I had a question for staff. I I heard a number of the uh public comments uh refer to uh a lot off of Orchard as wetlands. Is, what is that, what is the this area zoned as? I I think I'm familiar with it. I believe we're talking about the area right off the freeway that's open space kind of between Casa Cano and where, forgive me, but the Alamo and IHOP are over there. Is, what what is that area and can anybody tell me a little bit about the history of it? Uh, Mr. Forbes?
The the general plan and the zoning designation on the property currently is a low-density residential. Um, I don't recall up and exactly what the residential number is.
No problem.
But it's a single-family, single-family residential. Um, there are a number of challenges on the property. Um, there there it's within a flood zone. There are flood control easements on the property. Depending on which government agency you talk to, it may or may not be considered a wetland. Um, so there are a number of challenges there. Um, we proposed in the alternatives, looking at uh mixed-use or higher-density residential on the property um in response to comments that we heard through the process about people wanting opportunities for more residential in proximity to the Rancho Cano Employment Center. So that that's many, many of the the comments that we received and a lot of the conversation tonight is from um people who are very much opposed to that and others who are have indicated that they are in favor of doing some kind of development on that property. Um, so we're taking all that into consideration and trying to figure out um what we're going to do with it for the the uh preferred alternative.
Okay, but it's it, at its current state, it's actually zoned, single-family residential.
Yes.
Okay, good enough. Um, I had a question, um, and I don't, I actually don't know who to give this to, but um, we talked about the uh the identifying areas of change, and we have the uh the um areas of change areas, and then we have the village centers. And my understanding is is that there seems to be less enthusiasm for the village centers uh and greater enthusiasm for creating density in the areas of change. My question is, is that um, kind of following up on Mr. Newman's question about um how the city is set up, um where our open space, our parks and our schools are located, seem to um facilitate the village centers being more conducive to allowing development than the um than where we're where these proposed areas of change. If we're gonna increase our density um and allow uh the new residents that we're going to be providing for have access to some of the things that make Thousand Oaks wonderful, those are our schools and our parks and and our open space access. And so my question is, is how big a factor is that when we're talking about, you know, people talking about developing a Rancho Canal? Do we know which schools will service those areas? Are these things that are going into the consideration of this? Because if we're going to approve this and we're asking our school district, our park district to incur significant costs in trying to affect this 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 development that we're going to be uh zoning for, have have we considered that? And so, Mr. Ramey, Mr. Forbes, any, Mr. Holt?
It is, yes, it is something that's being considered, um and we've actually started, we've had um conversations with CRPD staff. Um, and we, you know, we recognize and understand that you know, some of what is being proposed in these alternatives is putting uh residential units into areas of the city that do not currently have them, which is going to increase the park demand in those areas. Um, because the city was developed under a very um, you know, single-family suburban model and the parks are located in those neighborhoods. Um, it is definitely going to be a challenge um to um purchase new parkland or or have it dedicated or whatever mechanism it ends up happening uh to create new parkland in those areas. So it is, you know, it's absolutely a challenge that we recognize and we've we've started conversations with CRPD staff about that. Um, and both that and the school impacts will be looked at through the environmental impact report um also. Um, so yeah, the the neighborhood center, the village centers rather, are definitely, you know, closer to existing parks, um but there's not enough capacity. If we if we just did all of the village centers, there still would not be uh enough capacity in those village centers to provide the housing that we need to provide um to make the state happy. So even putting density in those centers, we would still have to look at at other opportunities around the city.
Okay, yeah, I I I obviously understand that, but I was just thinking, are are have we have we have we abandoned the village center concept to some degree? Because I didn't I didn't hear a lot about it in the in the Ramey's presentation.
I I wouldn't say that we've abandoned it, but definitely the, you know, the feedback that we that it, you know, looks like we've gotten back through the survey is that there doesn't seem to be a lot of interest, at least from, you know, for for whatever you want to put into the survey results and however you feel about the survey results, there doesn't seem to be a lot of support for those through the survey results. But um, you know, there are still groups in in the community that we hear from that are very much in support of doing something in the neighborhood center. So it will be um ultimately up to this body and the city council to to make that determination.
Okay, well, I just wanted to throw that out at you guys based upon the fact that um my siblings went to University Elementary, which is no longer open. And so parts of this city have been abandoned by the infrastructure that it was originally designed for. And so I personally think that it's something that that we should consider as one of the, I think I'm one of the longest-tenured residents in this meeting. I've been here well over thirty years. And and that's one of the things that comes to mind is that when I think about that that northern part of Thousand Oaks, there's four elementary schools across there, one of which is closed. But then when I think about along Thousand Oaks Boulevard or heading over to Hillcrest, there's one. And so, you know, we could facilitate a lot of our existing infrastructure by thinking about where we're actually set up for for families and people to live. And so, you know, we we talked about the benefits of having people of varying income levels and everything be able to mix together. But at the same time, our city was kind of designed for some places to actually be residential and livable. And uh so so I I I don't know. I'm, that's more of a comment than a question, but I just wanted to make sure that that's part of the discussion. Because I I am thinking about parks and open space access in A, B, C, and D, and I'm thinking to myself, I don't know. I I know one park off Thousand Oaks Boulevard on the south side behind um, and you'll have to forgive me, it's across the street from the twenty-four uh Hour Fitness and behind the Mouthful Eatery. But that's literally the only park I can think of over in that area. Um, uh, so so, yeah, so I just I just want to make sure that that's part of our consideration when we're doing this.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, Matt, jump in quickly with this, because I I think it's a really important point. Um, and I just want to say that that there are a few areas of the city that have large, that are larger parcels that actually afford the opportunity to be able to build parks as part of development. One of the challenges is when you, you know, build half an acre here or half an acre there, it's difficult to actually collect enough money through fees to then buy a parcel to build a park. When you actually deal with an area like, say, the Oaks Mall, if you're gonna redevelop that, you actually have an incredible opportunity to build new open space as part of the development. Right? And that's how the city was created, and that's why there's so much great open space. It's because you have these larger developments and you could take a chunk of it. But when you have a small development, small footprint, you're not able to get as much. And so, you know, first is those big parcels, those big projects actually have an opportunity for more open space. The second is with, you know, more vertical development, you have to think about open space in a different way than maybe the cities been thinking about in the past, it's more closets and more walkable spaces. Um, and so that's something we've seen as communities transition for certain parks, the type of open space changes, the character is different.
Yeah, I appreciate that you're considering that. Um, the other question I had, and this is um, then I'll, then I'll, I think I'll be done. Um, industrial flex is a a big chunk of a lot of these, a lot of the the maps that you put out for me. And um, we're talking about um heights of buildings up to seventy-five feet. And uh I I know that uh the majority of residents I speak to in Thousand Oaks are less than enthusiastic of ever having their ability to see the hills around them blocked uh from any angle. So I was wondering, is is there a way for us to achieve our ends? Um, especially considering uh without resorting to mixed-use high, without resorting to industrial flex, without um superseding what has kind of been a standard for the city of keeping everything relatively low level? Is that possible or is that not mathematically possible based upon what you guys have seen? And I'll defer to Mr. Forbes or Mr. Holt.
I'll let Mr. Forbes answer this one.
Uh, we're, I I think it.
No problem.
Well, with regard to the uh, it is, I mean, it is possible to to meet the arena numbers and provide housing without the mixed-use high. It just means that there will have to be more mixed-use medium and mixed-use slow, you know, if, you know, should the the city council decide to to head in that direction. Um, the the um industrial flex, since it doesn't have any housing in it, it doesn't really play into the housing numbers. Um, that's intended more as just an opportunity for specifically for biotech, um for, you know, in those types of sectors that are looking for for more building space in this area. Um, the, and and to kind of to go back to um what Matt was saying earlier about how the heights get translated into the zoning. Um, the the height limits that we have in the land use alternatives are those height limits may or may not even be included in the general plan. General plans very often do not include height limits. Um, they only include the FAR as the means of controlling um the the intensity of of non-residential buildings. And then heights are addressed through the zoning code instead. So the the heights that we put in there were really intended to be more illustrative and conceptual. Um, so um if if the planning commission and and city council are, you know, want to discuss a different height limit or seventy-five is is way too high, but fifty or sixty is okay. I mean, those are conversations that can be had as as part of this conversation too. Um, and then for the residential, I mean, the the more you limit the height, obviously, the less density you can have. So you can't say, you know, I want to allow forty-five units an acre but limit it to twenty-five feet tall because you just can't fit that much density in that height. So there is definitely that relationship, but um it's it's appropriate, it would be appropriate to have conversations about the height too. The the land use alternatives are not intended to be in in all or nothing um with regard to the height and the FAR and the names that go with the categories. Um, those can all be discussed through this process.
So so those definitions are malleable. That's that's an even better answer. I didn't even conceive of that. All right, one more question and then I promise I'm done. Uh, Mr. Ramey, um, a lot of the uh plan includes um ideas of mixed use. And uh I happen to be in real estate as a residential realtor by trade. And one of my questions is, is um probably because you have uh better broad-based experience than I do on this. Um, do you know of mixed-use developments that exist anywhere in the state or in the country that involve people, uh individual owners having equity within the property in a co-op method or has condos above um uh the uh the units, or is it always rental?
No, it's it's, so I guess a couple of things. So first is what is mixed use, and I want to clarify this, so I'm glad you brought this up. So mixed use, as we have it defined in the general plan, can either be horizontal or vertical. So some of the situations, um it's vertical where you have ground floor retail and services and residential above. In other situations, it's actually mixed use by parcel. So you might actually have, and that's why we asked the question in the survey, are standalone residential buildings on Thousand Oaks Boulevard acceptable to you? And the majority of people said yes, so they're willing to accept some areas that are residential only. We see that Thousand Oaks Boulevard actually has too much retail. So if we take some of that retail in areas where it's not really viable and allow some standalone residential buildings and then focus the retail in certain places, you have mixed-use places but not mixed-use buildings. And that's a really important concept, and I could see the same thing happening at, you know, at the Oaks Mall or at Jan's Marketplace, where you might actually have residential buildings and retail buildings that are near each other. And according to our definition, that's mixed use, it's just not vertical. So to go to your your specific question, there are places where owners come together and have co-ops. Co-ops are different than um condos. So condos, yes, there are condos, there are multifamily condos. I will tell you condos are very difficult to build because you have attorneys who follow the condo builders around and file lawsuits if there's anything wrong. So the architects don't like building them and the builders don't like building them because they're constantly getting sued, which is why we see more multifamily apartments, res- re, um, you know, rentals than we do see as condos. I think it's unfortunate because I think condos are a great way for people who may not have as much income to enter the housing market. We just don't see a lot of them. Um, and and it's actually because of lawsuits. That. So that, I mean, you know, it it's complicated, like all of these things, it's like, you know, it it's a great idea, but when the sort of when the rubber hits the road with this, we end up with challenges. Mixed-use buildings are a challenge to get financed because a lot of times it's separate lenders for the retail component than for the residential component. It's easier to just get financing for a straight-up residential building or just for a retail building. So that's why we don't see the mixed-use places. So some of the things, and that's why we want to provide flexibility for mixed use will probably require ground floor, active spaces in certain areas and potentially relax it in others so that you don't need to do that. And that way we can a- achieve the types of places you want to, you want to get to.
Yeah, I appreciate that. That's a, I appreciate that answer. Thank you very much. Uh, fellow commissioners, anybody else before I? Ah, Commissioner McMahon.
Um, excuse me, in regards to your question about height, building height, I had some similar questions and similar concerns, and I needed a visual on how high is thirty-five feet and how high is mixed-use high sixty-eight feet and how high is industrial flex seventy-five feet? So I called city staff and asked for some examples of what we had around town, around this area of different buildings that might fit those heights and and it might be useful for the public and for yourself. might fit those heights and and it might be useful for the public and for yourself if the staff could just throw out some of the examples that they had given to me when I called earlier. Is that possible?
Sure, I can do that.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Rush, please.
Okay, I threw out a couple of examples. The Lupe's project is forty four feet tall at the front and forty six feet tall at the back, so that would have been an example of something similar to like a mixed use low, which has the fifty foot height limit. I also mentioned the Lynn Villa Apartments. Those are located at McLeod and Hillcrest. Those apartments have a height of forty eight feet. It's actually taller than the Lupe's project. And that's a three story residential project with tuck under garage, so technically it's four stories. And the other example that I threw out was the Sinclair Building, also known as the Bank of America Building. And the approved plans for that call out that building at sixty feet high, which is actually taller than the land use designation for mixed use medium at fifty eight feet and also the neighborhood high at fifty five feet. A couple of the really tall buildings in the city, the Civic Arts Plaza is much taller than that. That's closer to the commercial regional land use designation.
Um, that would be the seventy five feet. Okay.
Can I? Can I jump in on on heights? Because a perspective on heights is really important. And when we were doing the, we worked on the downtown strategy plan for the city, and we spent time walking kind of in in the sort of in the downtown area outside of Civic Arts Plaza and looking at different building heights from different perspectives. And when you're on a sidewalk and you have a one or two story building right next to you, as you do with some of the retail and and, you know, if you look up from that building, you can't see the hills when you're right next to a one story building. And I know the views of the hills are really important on that side of the street. If you go across the street and look across Thousand Oaks Boulevard, you can actually get a sense of the height of the building. So if you're going to look at Lupe's for the forty six to forty eight feet, you know, experience it when you're on the sidewalk right next to it and then experience it when you're off on the other side of the street and looking at it and see what it does to the views of the hills. I haven't seen the Lupe's since it was completed because of COVID. I haven't back there, but it might give you some good perspective on what that height is and relative to what it does to the views at different places.
Thank you.
Ms. McMahon, you're ours. Commissioner McMahon, you're ready or done?
Done.
Okay. Ms. Gore, do we need to take a quick vote to extend past ten o'clock? We're we're almost there.
I believe that would be appropriate.
You got it. And commissioners, are you prepared to vote for whether or not we can go past town a little bit here?
Chair Buss, I hereby move to let the meeting go beyond ten o'clock.
I appreciate that. Ms. Gore, can you prepare for a vote?
Commissioner Lanson?
Aye.
Commissioner Link?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Aye.
Chair Buss?
Hi. Thank you so much. All right, I will now open it up to the floor for further discussion if any commissioners have any further input they'd like to to make this time. Looking around, I think we're done talking about this. All right, so this is a department report, as I as I said earlier, so no vote is required. So we'll move on to our next agenda item. Thank you, staff, for being so well informed, so helpful, and for putting up with all of our questions. I really appreciate your time, and thank you, Mr. Ramey. All right. Well, now is the time for commission comments and or any A B one, two, three, four reports. Are there any comments from my fellow commissioners? Mr. McMahon?
Um, I also, I just want to make a quick comment that it was very helpful for all the the comments and the questions that my fellow commissioners had. The staff report was terrific, and I really really got a lot out of the comments of the general public. So we're going to be doing this again in two weeks, and I just want to make sure that the public knows that we want to hear from them and and it was there were some really good points that were brought up today from the public speakers. So come back again, encourage your friends. Let us hear from you. And that's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Lanson, please.
Just on my normal comment about the virus, if you go to vceemergency.com, it'll have information as to where to sign up to get the vaccine if you're in the the bracket, whether directly or through My Term, which is a link that's at the bottom of the page. Again, vaccines are going to be opening up, so again, please go on as soon as you can to get that vaccine and sign up as quickly as possible so that we can have this meeting in person hopefully pretty soon.
Thank you, Commissioner Lanson. Anyone else? I think we're good there. So we'll move along to staff updates. Ms. Finley, are there any follow up items, announcements, or upcoming issues?
Yes, just briefly, I'm I'll provide a quick update that I want to emphasize that the upcoming general plan update schedule is that was also provided in Mr. Ramey's presentation is also posted on the GPU website, which is the www.tokes2045.org. And it also includes additional opportunities for public comments, including an upcoming survey. Then if you want, I'll go ahead with the with the planning commission agenda coming up.
Please, if you'd like to report on our upcoming meetings, that would be wonderful.
Then, so the next meeting is on April twelfth. And there are three items on that agenda, and the first one will be a consideration of a special use permit for a sports training facility. And then we have an item concerning making a general plan consistency determination for the capital improvement program for Public Works, which is required by state law. And then the third item will be a presentation from the Public Works Department Sustainability Division staff on the Climate and Environmental Action Plan, which is related to the general plan update, and they're going to the give you a status and update on what they're doing and and how it's related to the general plan efforts. Then the next meeting after that will be April twenty sixth, which which, as you're all aware, will be to consider the the preferred land use alternative discussion. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. All right, with that, I just wanted to give one more thank you to all the staff that have been through this meeting and all the work you did to prepare for this. I cannot thank you guys enough for doing such a service for every everyone who's a resident of this town and works here. The work that you're doing now will be remembered for decades. And we appreciate your time. And with that, I'd like to thank everyone, and the meeting is now adjourned to the next meeting on April twelfth, twenty twenty one at six P M. Have a good night, everyone.